Assistant City Manager Powell. There she is.
Yes.
All right, welcome everybody to the October 5th meeting of the Eureka City Council. And tonight I would just like to start the meeting with a land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known as the Weot in the Weot language as Jeru Gigi. Fast actions by local, state and federal governments removed the Weot and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Weot community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And with that, I would like to move on to roll call.
Mayor Seaman?
Here.
All right, let me try. Councilmember Castellano and Councilmember Moulton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
I'm present.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Brigal.
Here.
Do you want to try to go to the other room again Pam? Are you going to be able to work it from there, do you think?
I'm going to try and watch it.
Mayor, can I make a recommendation?
You may.
Perhaps if when it's time for roll call votes, maybe you could take the roll call vote and then Pam could record it. That might, could help. I'm not sure if that would assist.
Like right now or oh, just in the future?
No, just moving forward in this meeting.
Oh, well, moving forward, hopefully we won't have this issue, but.
Probably not.
So now we have the pledge of allegiance and I am sure Assistant City Manager Powell is, has other things going on. Does anybody have a flag? If we, oh, there she goes. She moved the thing. I will go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance if you'd like to join me.
Echo cancelling speaker phone?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Try it now.
Thank you very much. And then now I will ask our city manager if there's a report out of the closed session.
I think that's the city attorney.
No final, that's okay. No final actions were taken in closed session. Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Mayor Seaman, we're working on a test, so disregard, it's not working.
Okay, we'll give you a little bit more time. We'll move on to our proclamations. Hopefully everybody else's will work fine.
Try it now.
So we are going to start our mayor's announcements with several proclamations and I am going to ask Councilmember Moulton to read one for Arts and Humanities Month.
Hello, don't mind me, I just dropped my tablet.
I think that might have worked.
I'm very excited about this one, of course. I'm a huge supporter and participant of the arts. National Arts and Humanities Month, October 21st, or October 2021. Whereas the coronavirus has had a devastating impact on America's art sector with 99% of producing and presenting organizations having canceled events and artists being among the most severely affected segments of the nation's workforce. Yet notwithstanding this fact, the arts have helped collectively lead us through the darkest times of the pandemic, lifting our spirits, unifying communities and jump-starting the economy. And whereas the nation's 120,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, the nation's 4,500 local arts agencies and the Arts and Humanities Council of the 50 states and the six US jurisdictions and districts have regularly issued official proclamations on an annual basis designating October as National Arts and Humanities Month. And whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect and imagination of humankind. And whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American. And whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities and our country. And whereas the cities and states through their local and state arts agencies, including the Ink People as Eureka's local arts agency and the Humboldt Arts Council as Eureka's state arts agency, representing thousands of cultural organizations have celebrated the value and importance of cultural, of culture in the lives of Americans and the help of thriving communities during National Arts and Humanities Months for several years. And whereas the humanities help diverse communities across the United States explore their history and culture with the support and partnership of the National Endowment for the Humanities, the 50 state and six territorial and district humanities council and local educational and cultural institutions. Now therefore I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Seaman and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim October as National Arts and Humanities Month in Eureka, California, and call upon our community members to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our nation and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said community members in taking action for the arts and humanities in their towns and cities. Hooray for the arts. And we have Libby Maynard from the Ink People Center for the Arts here to accept this honor. Libby, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you Katie. That was a wonderful reading and I'm happy to reinstitute the proclamation as an annual event in October for the city of Eureka. We're very, very happy to be able to support and make Eureka such a wonderful place to live. So, thank you Katie.
Thank you very much, Libby. We're very happy to have you here to accept it and every year to, to make it. So we always like to recognize the arts as often as we can. Next, I would like to invite Councilmember Bauer to read the proclamation for the 70th anniversary for the Northern California Community Blood Bank.
Thank you for the opportunity, having been somebody that's received life-saving blood in my lifetime. I appreciate all those that, that donate and participate in this. So whereas, blood donors are the foundation for providing safe blood products and meeting the medical needs of patients nationwide and their donation is the difference between life and death in most instances. And whereas donating blood is safe, simple and gives volunteers an opportunity to become quiet, quiet heroes in their community and across the country by saving lives with each donation. And whereas donating blood is a selfless act of saving lives and the ultimate act of kindness. All citizens should recognize the gift of life that is shared through blood donation and strive to donate as often as possible and encourage others to do likewise. And whereas the North Coast, Northern California Community Blood Bank recognizes that patients' needs cannot be met without volunteer blood donors, including 3,000 first-time donors each year. And whereas the Northern California Community Blood Bank has served our community as a healthcare organization, nonprofit corporation and significant economic drivers since 1951. And now therefore I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of this Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim October 6th, 2021 as the 70th anniversary of the Northern California Community Blood Bank and further proclaim October 2021 as the Volunteer Blood Donor Month in the city of Eureka and do hereby urge all citizens, in particular, community members who, who have never donated, to donate blood and recognize the importance of this priceless gift.
And John Gullum of the Northern California Community Blood Bank is here. 70 years, that is a good, long history.
Yes, it's, it's been very interesting for me, looking back over the last 70 years, I haven't been here the whole time, at, at how the organization began with local physicians drawing donors and it started as a volunteer organization. And a lot of people don't know where our funding comes from and basically we're a nonprofit fee-for-service organization. We charge the hospitals for, for the blood products they receive. We don't receive federal subsidies. We're not part of a county, city, state, federal government. We're like many of you, business people. And over the years, it's, there've been challenges, but like the proclamation said, like Scott said, without the members of this community supporting our mission to serve the patients of Northern California, we wouldn't have been here for 70 years. And again, I'm not going to be here another 70 years, but I look forward to seeing another 70 years of the Northern California Community Blood Bank. Thank you very much.
I will say you have been retired for a few years and you're still here, so I don't believe you won't be here in a few years. And we are going to move on now to Councilmember Brigal, who is going to read the Domestic and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. Domestic, or in recognition of Domestic and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month, October 2021. Whereas domestic and intimate partner violence remains a serious social issue across all economic, ethnic, sexual preference and age categories. And whereas domestic and intimate partner violence violates an individual's dignity, security and humanity with the systematic use of control through physical, emotional, sexual, psychological and economic abuse, its victims can face life-threatening injuries, emotional challenges and death. And whereas children who witness domestic violence are at greater risk of lifelong behavioral problems, alcohol and drug abuse, and of becoming abusers and victims in their adult intimate relationships. And whereas in 1977, a group of local women started Humboldt Domestic Violence Services, HDVS, to provide life-saving emergency services to battered women and their children and to develop public policy around domestic and intimate partner violence as well as human trafficking. And whereas through public education and outreach programs, HDVS enlists a diverse array of allies, agencies and communities in changing the mindset that domestic and intimate partner violence and human trafficking are acceptable. Only together as community can we change the cultural norms and perpetuate human trafficking, domestic and intimate partner violence that, excuse me, that perpetuate, I said and, that perpetuate human trafficking, domestic and intimate partner violence and the stigma attached to its survivors. And now therefore I, Kim Brigal, on behalf of the mayor and the city council, do hereby proclaim this month of October 2021 to be Domestic and Intimate Partner Violence Awareness Month. The city of Eureka celebrates HDVS's upcoming 45 years of effort to improve community safety by breaking the cycle of domestic and intimate partner violence. And I just wanted to say that this year, I don't know if they're going to have their silhouettes in front of the courthouse, but if you've never been to see how many people die of domestic violence a year, they have names. It really is a moving experience and you really get a taste of what people really walk through. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see Amber Campbell from the Humboldt Domestic Violence Services. Are you receiving the proclamation?
Yes ma'am, thank you so much for having me. I'm Amber Campbell and I am the fiscal and HR director here at Humboldt Domestic Violence Services. I want to thank you all on behalf of the staff here at Humboldt Domestic Violence Services for having us here for this proclamation. It's very important to us that we stay as a part of the community and having this proclamation helps the word get out that domestic violence is something that we should all care about and that we're here to serve the community and its survivors moving forward. Like was said, we've been here since 1977 and we're going through some changes right now, but are super excited about the future and how we can help our survivors to become strong and resilient and how we can help them moving forward in their lives. So thank you again for having us and that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much for the good and important work that you're doing. We really appreciate it.
Mayor Seaman, I was going to do a quick test.
And our last proclamation today is going to be read by Councilmember Arroyo for Indigenous Peoples History Day. Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you, Mayor. And I see that we have Chair Ted Hernandez here. Are you here to receive this proclamation?
Yes, I am ma'am.
Awesome, great to see you.
You as well.
All right, so this is in recognition of Indigenous Peoples History Day, October 11th, 2021. Whereas the city of Eureka recognizes October 11th, 2021 as Indigenous Peoples History Day and affirms its commitment to promote the well-being of the local Weot tribe and other indigenous people in the community. We honor local Native American people respecting their resiliency and honoring their history. And whereas the city of Eureka recognizes the indigenous peoples of the lands that would later become known as Humboldt County and the homesteads and villages of the indigenous peoples of this region. And whereas the city of Eureka values the many contributions made to our collective community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, technology, spirituality, science, philosophy, arts and the cultural contributions that have shaped the character of the city of Eureka. And whereas the city of Eureka has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism towards indigenous peoples in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of income inequality, exacerbates disproportionate health, education and social stability. And whereas the city of Eureka promotes the closing of the equity gap for indigenous peoples through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of indigenous people, ensure greater access and opportunity and honor our nation's indigenous history and contributions. Now therefore I, Natalie Arroyo, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2021 as Indigenous Peoples' Day. And this day shall be used to reflect upon the ongoing struggles of indigenous people and to celebrate the thriving culture and value that indigenous people add to our community. Chair Hernandez, welcome. Thank you for being here and the floor is yours.
Well, first of all, thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. Let's see, these are some awesome proclamations that were made tonight and they all have to do with culture and survival and you know, that's what we're all here for today is, is to all learn and grow together in Weot community. And first, you know, foremost, thank you for recognizing the lands of the Weot people and our ancestors that have gone before us. But today is an awesome day to have all these individuals recognized and their, and the work they do. You know, it's, it's not just all we want, it's all of us together to make this community, the community that we live in is a great community and willing to share our knowledge with each other and just learn from each other. Again, thank you again to you and the, and the council and the city of Eureka and that Weot tribe always looks forward to working more with you on more projects and continue to grow as a community. And thank you again. And all you have a great night and a great evening.
You too. We also really appreciate and value our partnership with the Weot tribe and the other tribes that are in the area as well. And now we are going to move on to the poet laureate program. We, we're going to have a new poet laureate. So I'm going to ask Swan Asbury from our economic, our Economic Development Manager to introduce the project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we are announcing the two new poet laureates for 2021 through 2023. So I'd like to introduce Will Gibson as our new adult poet laureate and Jordan Moore as our new youth poet laureate. Will and Jordan, would you like to take a moment and introduce yourself?
There we go, okay. Hi, I'm Will Gibson. I am more than honored to be selected. Being a poet laureate is a big deal in my family, kind of a pipe dream that we aspire to, but my adopted home honored me with it and I could not be more proud to live in Eureka. I have several programs lined up, several of which are already in swing, poetry contests, free notebooks to any and all people, anywhere, ever. All they have to do is come by the store for 22nd Street in Eureka or find me anywhere at our readings. You can find all of them at Word Humboldt on Instagram or Facebook or all those things. And yeah, I'm, I'm actually, as soon as I leave here, about to go host a poetry show. Poetry is my life and I am honored to share my life and my poetry with this amazing city that has welcomed me. Thank you.
Lovely. Congratulations and we are looking forward to seeing all the great stuff you produce. And also I will ask Jordan Moore, if you have anything?
Hey, I'm Jordan, I'm 17. I've lived in Eureka for pretty much as long as I can remember, pretty much raised here too. I've been writing poetry off and on now for a little while. And pretty recently, before I was actually accepted as poet laureate, my grandma passed away and I heard it was, is it all right if I present a poem to you guys?
Sure.
Okay, so it's about her, so hopefully it's not too somber. Right. "It's the law, being dead isn't enough for the government. Stamp here please. Now she's dead, the paper will be put in the filing cabinet of the world. She had it well and then she didn't. She felt better and then moved into the next gap, ripping it off over and over and over, till it's scarred. She died at that moment. There were many things in order in which she got none of. She shook it off, she enjoyed the trees and cows even when I didn't and loved the water and pictures of water and books that described that having detail encompass you. She's gone. It's hard to quantify or comprehend nothing." And that's where she is, just sleeping and dreaming of stars.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
We really love having two poet laureates, a youth laureate as well, to give voice to, to all ages in our community. And so I want to invite Councilmember Castellano, the poet laureate programs, her baby. And so I want to talk a little bit about what she's seen over the last couple of years.
Sure, thank you. And I mean, not just my baby, but kind of all of ours. And so I really appreciate that, you know, it's become a project of the council and a partnership between the city of Eureka and the Ink People. This program is now just beginning its second round. Each poet laureate serves a two-year term. We, we realized after starting that one year, you know, every poet also, not only are they presenting poems and sharing poems, but they're creating a project within the community. And we really want to thank our outgoing poet laureate, David Holper, for, for setting such a wonderful foundation for the poet laureate program. And then also Izzy and Harvey, who served as our, as two, we had two youth poet laureates for, for the first round. Yeah, and just thinking, you know, Libby from the Ink People and Monica and Gabrielle at the Ink People staff for helping kind of facilitate that and Swan for, for being such a champion for arts within the city as well. So, you know, it's really great to have this, just pairing of arts and voice and culture as ways of communicating who we are and, and that government is part of that story of culture. And you know, we, in our own ways, we kind of all wrestle with, with what, what it means to be together. And so I think it's really valuable to have poets as part of that conversation. And I wasn't sure, Will, if you wanted to share a poem or not, if you had to get going, I didn't want to not give you a chance to share a poem if you wanted to share a poem.
I actually did not bring it into the car with me, so I wrote a specific poem for tonight and left it inside North Town Coffee when I came out here. And it would take me far too long to go in and get it and come back. I appreciate you, but I'll, I'll have several readings where you can all come and enjoy poetry live.
Perfect.
And Will, perhaps you can send it, if you don't mind it, in written form. We could put it in our next newsletter.
Oh yeah, that'd be wonderful. I'll send you information.
Excellent, thank you so much. All right, well, those were all of our proclamations and programs for tonight. And I, what I really liked about it is that it really does sort of cover this very broad swath of what we look at and work on as a community. So we had some medical stuff in there, we had some art stuff, we had some social services and some equity pieces. And I, I really like that because a lot of times when somebody's thinking about what's happening at the city, they're thinking about something very specific. But all of the time, we're thinking about a lot of things at once. And I really liked that this kind of covered that breadth of it. And now I'm going to give my very brief report of activities. We did, I did travel this past month. We went, I went to the League of Cities Conference with several other council members and staff members. It was in Sacramento. And there we were able to get some deeper education on, you know, some of the fiscal responsibilities and how to, what are the rules and regulations around negotiating with unions as well as just some best practices. And one of the things that I was really inspired by and excited by and will be bringing back is human-centered design. And we got to connect with leaders from other cities. So it was a really good opportunity. And I was, I haven't seen you all for months, so I wanted to also say that I, with, in partnership with the city of Eureka and some other folks, we distributed PPE, face masks to two, almost 200,000 people. And we started at AEDC, but the city of Eureka has been distributing them for the past month. So if there are businesses who still need face masks, I believe there's still some there. So you just call the Economic Development Department if you need some for your staff and they can get some more N95 masks for you. And then the final thing I wanted to mention is I've been working on a regional economic development summit. It's going to be held on October 21st and 22nd. It's really going to be very exciting with some great keynote speakers, information about emerging industries and, you know, how do we tackle some of the real economic development issues that we have going on right now? So if you're interested in learning more, you can go to gohumbco.com, that's the Humboldt County Economic Development page, and they will get you to the regional site where you can learn more about that conference. And now I am going to move on to the public comment period. And I don't know that we have a lot of public comment today, but before I, we start the whole meeting, I just want to acknowledge that we have a lot of things in the agenda today that I think people feel pretty passionate about. So I just wanted to remind everyone that we have some rules of civil, civil debate. And this was agreed on by city councils prior to me, that it's a good way to go into things. So remember, we may disagree, but we will be respectful to one another. All comments will be directed to the issue at hand. Personal attacks, attacks are unacceptable and applauding or other displays of approval or disapproval are discouraged. Please keep yourself muted and you don't have to make facial expressions. And it is really important and valuable for council to hear everybody's opinions and we, and they really do listen. But I'll just remind you that respectful comments are more likely to be effective at reaching their ears. So as we move on, I just wanted to think about that and ask if there is anybody for public comment today.
Mayor, could I do a quick sound test? It does show me on, okay, let me try. A quick sound test, no. A quick sound test, no.
No, bummer.
No.
Okay, I'm going to look and see if there's any public comment on the side here. Raise your hand on the, using the reaction buttons down below.
Madam Mayor, someone on the screen is raising their hand physically.
Physically? Let me see, because we, oh, Nancy Kavanaugh.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm Nancy Kavanaugh. I live here in Eureka and I am here today representing Humboldt Botanical Gardens. I want everyone to know that the gardens are funded mostly by Art Gala, which is a once-a-year fundraiser. Unfortunately, this year we're not able to do it because of the pandemic. So, people, and you see my sign, we're doing an online auction. You can preview the auction, starting October the 10th at hbgf.org. The auction itself will begin in, on October 17th through the 23rd. We have plein air painters out at the garden. We have numerous wonderful gift certificates generously donated by most of the merchants in the community. And we're really counting on everyone showing up to the auction and helping us out so we can keep those gardens looking green and beautiful. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it looks like Ash has a hand raised.
Okay, I was wondering, so is this section for like comments on the whole agenda tonight?
No, this is first item specifically not on the agenda. So if it's not on the agenda...
I'll chime back in on the agenda I'm looking for. Thank you.
Excellent. Alright. Okay, so we will move on. I'll close public comment. I don't see any other hands raised. And we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mayor, there is one more. Mayor, there is a hand up. Mayor, there is a hand up.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar minus item B4.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Alright. Can we get a roll call vote? And how about this Pam, I will call for it and then you can just capture it? Good idea Natalie, the rest of the meeting. Councilmember Castellano, I might pull out of order though, unfortunately.
Hi.
Councilmember Molton?
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer?
Hi.
Councilmember Brigal?
Try again, I'm seeing your video.
Yes.
Alright. Sorry, I don't have everybody on my screen as they are in their districts and I can't remember who's which district sometimes, so.
So I'm going to try this one more time, unanimous yes vote. Motion carries. Unanimous yes vote, motion carries. Thanks.
And now we have item B4. And for that, I am going to ask our traffic engineer, Scott Elsmore, and the city manager, Slattery, to address that.
Good evening. So I have a short PowerPoint, there we go, perfect. So yeah, so I'm Scott Elsmore, Transportation Project Manager for the City of Eureka. And I'm here to talk about parking restrictions that are proposed for Railroad Del Norte and Felt Street and Truesdale Streets. Next slide, please Brian. Thanks. So this area, and I have a, the next couple of slides will show the maps, gives an idea of where this area is. So this area has been experiencing large volume of overnight, long-term parking as well as inappropriate parking uses such as vehicle maintenance in the roadway, storage of vehicles and debris, trash disposal, those types of things. So Public Works has worked with EPD to find a solution and provide a tool to manage parking in these areas while maintaining access for commercial vehicle parking, which has historically been the dominant need for parking in this area. So we are proposing parking controls similar to what we've used successfully in other similar areas that are adjacent. Next slide. So the proposal for managing parking in these areas, like I said, similar to what we have in some adjacent areas, which I'll talk about a little bit later, is to limit parking between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM with commercial vehicles accepted. So they would be able to park there, is, like we said, that's historically been one of the higher uses. So this map shows those areas that are proposed in yellow or orange. It's Railroad Avenue between Del Norte Street to 450 feet north of 14th Street. It's Del Norte Street between Felton Railroad Avenue, Felt Street between Del Norte and Hawthorne Streets, and Truesdale between Broadway and Christie Streets. Next slide. So this strategy's been utilized in the recent past to manage parking, similar parking issues with success. And so here you'll see a map, it's probably hard to see at the scale, but it shows we've done similar parking restrictions on Del Norte Street, west of Railroad Avenue, as well as Short Street, adjacent to City Corporation Yard. So we've used these similarly recently and had good success with them. Next slide. So the process for parking, parking changes or parking time restrictions are kind of as follows. So what happens is if there's a proposal, city staff sends out notifications to all properties, and that would be owners or tenants within 300 feet of a proposed change. On that notification, we explain what the change is and we talk about how they, how folks can go to the meeting, the Transportation Safety Commission meeting in this case. So we received, one staff sent those letters out. We received two phone calls from folks who wanted to comment on the agenda items but didn't want to be part of the, on the public comment portion of the TSC meeting. Either they couldn't attend or they just wanted to forward their concerns or thoughts. Both of the comments were similar that we received from the public. They both supported the proposal, but were concerned the area was either not large enough or didn't include all the areas they felt they were concerned about. So those are the two public comments we received prior to the meeting. We didn't receive any other public comments during the meeting itself. So then on September 14th, we had a Transportation Safety Commission meeting where we brought this agenda item up. Both EPD and Public Works talked about the proposal as well as some of the problems that were going along with parking out there. So commission members opened it up to the public, which we didn't have any more public input. The commission had discussed at length at that time. We, the Transportation Safety Commission is a five-member commission. They had one member absent, we had one member absent, so it was a four-person commission. After discussion, they, the commission voted two to two, it was a split, on the proposal. So they weren't able to forward a recommendation at that time. Again, you can go to the next slide, Brian. With, with staff having success with these parking types of restrictions and EPD being supportive and looking for a tool, we were supportive of this parking proposal and we're requesting the council approves it and moves forward. So that's all I have. If you've got any questions, I can answer those as well.
Alright, council, do you have any questions? Oh wait, that's right, city manager Slattery is also going to do some speaking.
So yeah, we, clearly we had a lot of community input related to this topic. I just wanted to say that, you know, the reasoning behind this is this, it's really conflicting uses for this industrial area. We've had a lot of public safety issues, a lot of environmental issues, other things associated with that, but mainly the public safety issues are a concern. There's been concern about some of the overnight camping that has been going on there. I just want to make it clear to the public as well as to council that, you know, when we go and address the issues, whether from a vehicle abatement standpoint or from a litter standpoint or whatever it may be, that we, we provide staff of both CSET and from EPD as well as Uplift that goes and we treat these, if it is a camping issue, we treat them like encampments. We go and provide notification, we bring services to them, we offer those services and programming that we offer to those other individuals that are in encampments to offer them shelter, housing, programs that are available to them in order to help them avail themselves to find a more appropriate location. A lot of the issues with sanitation and environmental issues are issues there as well as the safety issues, but there's environmental issues by providing these resources to those community members so that they can find a more appropriate place that does have sanitation facilities and would avoid some of the environmental impacts and safety issues that we have in this area. So this will definitely be treated as we do with other encampments and they will be provided adequate notification and provided services, shelter space, housing if they're eligible for it, and we'll provide a homeless outreach worker to work with these individuals. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Alright, do you have any questions from council? Councilmember Bauer?
So city manager Slattery, has the city had to go and do any kind of cleanup along railroad? I've noticed, I use that trail quite a bit. Tires, TVs and whatnot kind of getting piled up along that, along the parking area there. Has there been any kind of cleanup done by city lately?
Oh, yes. I mean, it's pretty routine that we've had to go out there and clean up trash and some environmental hazards, I guess you could call, out there with our harbor staff as well as CSET and even our park staff as well as our volunteer trail stewards. They've done a lot of work in that area as well for removing litter as well. So yes, there's continual maintenance of that area, yes. Both, all the areas, excuse me.
And one more, is it, have there been calls for service out there? A CSET had to go out and do anything like what I saw on Sixth Street today?
Yeah, I think Captain Stevens is here and can answer to that, but yes, I know that we definitely received calls for services there. Stevens could probably give more, Captain Stevens could probably give more accurate information.
Good evening, yes, I'm Mr. Bauer. There are calls for service, mainly have to do with the parking issues. The trail stewards call every time they go in and do a cleanup because we need to clean out those areas so they can cut the grass and do that in a safe manner, not to be harassed by animals. And then also we have calls for service from the businesses down there. So often renter will call because of the way vehicles are parked, they can't safely get their fuel trucks in and out, the visibility is cut down because of some of the vehicles. And also with some of the other industrial businesses along railroad there, closer to Costco, they're having a lot of problems and concerns with the products they move in and out of there and having people constantly sitting outside causing traffic hazards and monitoring their business.
Thank you.
Councilmember Brigal?
I'm just curious if you get calls for off-leash dogs, drug dealing, those types of situations in that region?
I have not pulled the stats, but mostly it has to do with the visual and the trash that's left behind, the nuisance type issues. Again, the environmental issues, the trail stewards and the business complaints. Not a lot of people call, there's not a lot of people that are static enough in there to see what they believe to be some of the issues you brought up such as drug dealing. It's not like watching a nuisance house where it's right across the street and you're right there watching it every day. People are driving by, they see the, the issues what they are as they drive by, not necessarily sitting watching and trying to decipher what the issue actually is or the underlying issues are.
Thank you.
Any other question? Councilmember Castellano and then Molton.
Just a couple of questions. Have, have there been any kind of programs to place dumpsters regularly in the area? I know they would have to be monitored in some way.
So, I mean, we've never done that. We've tried it in the past. They'd end up being caught on fire. When we were doing cleanups in the Palco Marsh area for over a three-year period, we tried that out. And we would do that, they'd end up on fire, maybe a fire hazard. What we have done is for cleanups is we make sure that at all of our cleanups that we bring out the dumpsters, we do the cleanup and the dumpsters are moved that same day. Not only does it cause a fire hazard, but it also attracts illegal dumping and a lot of folks will come and add material from their home and cause legal dumping. We went through this for years while cleaning up the Palco Marsh area.
Yeah, and then, do you have a sense of where people might go if this were enacted?
Well, we'll definitely encourage them to afford themselves of the services that we can provide. Anybody who's eligible for the over $300,000 in housing funding that we have, they will be afforded those opportunities if they qualify. We will also assign them and find locations for them and shelter spaces if housing is not something that works for them. But we do this with, you know, all of the encampments that we tend to and try and provide services for. I spoke with Brian Hall today, there is availability at his shelter. I spoke with Jeff Davis today and we still do have funding available and willing landlords to help people find housing. We housed five people just in the last two weeks. So we will definitely afford them the ability to use those services and programs.
And for you, less, our councilmember Castellano, and then I'll move on to councilmember Molton.
Are you finished, councilmember Castellano? When people do, or if people do choose to avail themselves of the services that are available, besides actually getting into a place with your own driveway, do any of the shelters or the tiny house village or any of these safe places have the sort of parking that could accommodate a full-size RV or long-term parking? Most of the ones I can think of are like in the city or surrounded by two-hour parking zones.
So currently, they don't. There's been ventures to look at other agencies, churches, those type of things in the past to try and find, you know, places where that could happen. However, if the vehicle's registered and, you know, it can go to Eureka Rescue Mission Park, sleep and then, you know, use their vehicle. Obviously, the seven-two hour provisions would apply and those type of things, but it's registered, there's no stopping them from parking on the street, parking which is typically readily available in a second-street area or by other shelters.
Councilmember Brigal? Oh, you're done, councilmember Molton? Okay, councilmember Brigal?
I'm just curious about camping. So we just passed an ordinance. Is the location that you're discussing, that we're discussing tonight, part of that ordinance?
Yes, it does fall within the restricted areas of that ordinance, yes.
Alright, and I know that we've reached out to churches in the past and not had much luck, so hopefully, maybe if any churches are listening tonight, contact city manager Slattery. That wasn't a question, I apologize.
Do we have any other questions? Councilmember Arroyo?
I was wondering if there are any other applicable rules or regulations that we could be tapping to address, to abate the issues? I am not necessarily advocating at this point, I'm just wanting to understand, you know, what else can we do if someone, you know, I mean, let's say someone's parked anywhere and they're leaving an abundant amount of trash around a vehicle or they're working on a car for multiple days in a location and it's not functioning. What else is, is there as a tool?
Well, obviously like Captain Stevens answered this more so, but yeah, there are different tools, whether it's vehicle abatement type of tools, as well as I know that they use the municipal code for RV parks and I'm sure, you know, littering and those types of things could be applied, but Captain Stevens?
Yes, so the other tools would all be enforcement-related. As the city managers stated, there are municipal codes against littering, creating a nuisance on a city street, utilizing a city street for the purposes of working on a vehicle, storage of vehicles. There are restricted areas where motorhomes of certain sizes can't even park. And that's related to having motorhomes inside residential areas where parking is limited and visibility is limited. So there are many different aspects of the municipal code and the vehicle code. I can tell you from experience that almost every motorhome we run into down there is not registered. And when I say not registered, I'm not talking six months or even during the time of COVID. I have multiple ones that we're dealing with now that are four and five years out of registration. And those people occupying those motorhomes are not the registered owners of those motorhomes. They've passed hands so many times that we don't even know, you know, who was last. They've passed hands so many times that we don't even know, you know, who was the last owner other than what DMV can tell us. So they truly have no standing with those vehicles. And that's why we end up towing quite a few of them under the municipal code for the abatement or for the 72-hour parking because they are so dilapidated. They are creating an environmental hazard because they leak fluids, leak raw sewage, and they're expired and should never be on the highway anyway. They don't have insurance. There's just a lot of different factors that come with these. The parking, if you would clean up the area down there and they would find a place to park, they wouldn't create such an issue and they wouldn't create such a nuisance or at least a visible nuisance, then the complaints would be less. And we do this on a complaint-based type prospect because we're just too busy to actively go out and have to address this every single day. So that's why you see them stack up on railroad. We get complaints, we go down and speak with them, offer services, tag vehicles, and can clean railroad up probably in three or four days. But that lasts a short amount of time and then the complaints come back where the complaints start somewhere else in the city. So yeah, just looking for an avenue to try to address the issue. You know, we look for long-term solutions versus short-term enforcement-type actions that we know they're not going to be able to pay the fines or anything like that.
So just, oh, go ahead. Sorry, just to be be sure I'm clear. So you you do have tools to address some of this, but it would require personnel frequently engaging? And it wouldn't necessarily, from your perspective, it sounds like you think it wouldn't necessarily just address some of the issues.
It's not going to solve the issues. It's just going to short-term resolutions that may be seen for a period of time, but they will return. We've been doing this for the last four years, five years, we've been doing abatement. We've seen it over and over again.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
My question about abatement too is already, abatement is so difficult to handle. How would we be able to enforce this any differently than if this happens? We still have the same limitations that way.
So truly, this isn't an abatement issue because these vehicles aren't necessarily abandoned. These are municipal code violations for the types of issues that they are causing, whether parked over 72 hours, but they're occupied, the trash, the littering, the environmental hazards. Those are EMC violations that would be dealt with more likely from a law enforcement, from an actual sworn officer position than our abatement. If they're dumping motorhomes down there or we have motorhomes that are, like I said, leaking raw sewage or fluids, we can deal with those from an abatement issue. But mostly this will need to be dealt with and especially because they're occupied from enforcement, from a law enforcement side of the house, because I don't, can't have my volunteer going out and contacting people who are to be agitated. It's going to take law enforcement either way. I can't let her do it by herself because there's safety factors involved. But truly, it's a municipal code issue that needs to be addressed by the officers.
And just so council and the public knows, you know, as part of the strategic visioning, there was an inclusion of increasing code enforcement position. We're going into that process now to add more force into the vehicle abatement. So we will have a code enforcement officer joining EPD to help them and assist in in this endeavor because council made that a priority in their strategic visioning.
All right. Steve, Chief, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to jump in real quick. I think that the others did a good job of explaining the issues. But one, we already have to go down there from time to time and warn people in advance and try to maintain their, I mean, get their voluntary compliance and move them on. In some abandoned vehicles, some occupied, like the captain described. I'm hoping that by making this a parking issue, one, that's at a lesser level perhaps than having to use the municipal code as a quasi-criminal, you know, issue with the corresponding reports. So the benefits of that as well as I'm hoping to reduce the number of people and that we actually have to go down in contact. You know, it may not be perfect. No one's calling this perfect long-term solution per se. But if it can reduce interactions between law enforcement and code enforcement and those individuals, that's a positive in addition to the other public safety and environmental issues that have already been discussed. Also, been doing this a long time and the reality is, you know, we're all frustrated sometimes. We can't, we don't have a place right now we can tell people to go. Other than like the city manager said, we have space at the mission and a couple other options. But when you start to get clusters, you know, of people and situations, you see an increase in the environmental impacts, the damage, the dumping of appliances, vehicles and other associated problems as well. And again, I know this will maybe perhaps disperse a little bit, but into smaller problems. But I think as a net, it will leave us in a better place to maintain public safety and health right now than what we have right now. And again, addressing it as a parking issue may be preferable than some of the other options.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other questions from council? If not, I will open it up to public comment on this item. Does anybody have a comment on this item?
Mayor, I'm doing a quick sound check if you can hear me.
I had one more question, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
Can I pose that first? Okay.
Yes, you can.
I just wondered if staff had considered a reduced size of a parking limitation area or something that in just hearing the chief say that about perhaps limiting the concentration of that impact, but not entirely forbidding parking overnight there? Was that considered in staff's discussion?
I can let Scott answer a little bit more of that. But just so we're clear that this is doesn't have, commercial parking is still available and commercial parking is needed there. So commercial vehicles will be allowed to park there overnight. And that's some of the requests that we've had from the business owners there as well. But Scott, you can talk about this.
Yeah, so that's a good point. We looked at it a couple of different ways. We we tried to address, draw up the areas that we felt were the biggest problems currently. We had a couple of different schools of thought. One was, okay, well, where do we think people are going to move to? Or so we kind of came to, it's like, let's deal with this as where the issues are. And so what we drew up were essentially where the issues where we see the most power at currently. There's a whole lot of other areas you could address, but until there's an issue there, we figured let's let's deal with where they're at currently. So the lines we drew on the map seem to make the most sense for what we're seeing out there at this time.
Can I answer it?
It does. I'm just looking at the map right now and reading it and kind of piecing it back together. I don't know if, did you have something that you could pull back up to show that again? I'm sorry, I was kind of toggling between things.
Yeah, just one second here.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I do a quick sound check? Can you hear me? No one can hear me.
I'll just take a screenshot once you pull it up so that. So no one can hear me. Thank you.
You get it? All right. So we turn that off. And if we don't have any other questions, I'm going to go to public comment. And I see.
Hello, can you hear me?
LaTanya?
I have questions.
Yes.
I do have questions, so I did want to let you know that I will submit my comments and writing. And I do apologize if there's any noise from my end and video that's maybe throwing people off. But I am going to submit comments and write through email, okay?
All right. Thank you very much. And Caroline Griffiths.
Hello. I want to thank you for pulling this to have a larger discussion about it. I'm one of the members of the Transportation Safety Commission who voted against this proposal. And when I saw it again on the consent calendar, my initial reaction was just that this is this is too big of a discussion just to put in the consent calendar, which is to supposed to be for things that are non-controversial. And this really does affect a lot of people. Really, the the biggest issue that I see and why I voted against it is that this doesn't really solve the problem. Even in the presentation and what Captain Stevens has even spoken about this evening, you know, it's likely that we this, people still need to be somewhere and they're still going to be somewhere in their RVs. They're likely going to move somewhere else in the city. And so just chasing them around the city doesn't actually solve the problem. There will still be environmental issues wherever they are because they don't have trash service. There will likely be a lot of the same nuisance issues. So this really just highlights the need for long-term solutions. And one thing that a lot of cities across the country have done are safe parking areas where there can be people who are together, where there are services. And I really appreciate that this became a larger discussion. So I could hear from city manager Slattery what is actually being offered to folks when you go down to clean up those areas, that there there is the outreach to people to get them into services, that this does exist. There's obviously quite a need for more of that. And this is something that could happen in a safe parking area where there could be access to sanitation. There could be access to safe lighting services and also just interaction with city services, city police officers to really build those relationships to help people get into those services. I know that a lot of the officers that do this work, you understand that it's more than about just going to to offer somebody help. You have to build those relationships with them before they trust you to get into that. And so to be able to set up places to make that happen. I really worry that this will just be then, you know, a lot of what we do at the Transportation Safety Commission unfortunately is just approve parking changes. So is this going to mean that, you know, a few months from now, we have another parking change come to us and we just shuffle folks around the city without actually solving the problem? So I really encourage you to vote no on this and to continue the work that you are doing because you are doing a lot of great work at the city to get people services, to get people into housing and to help them access those programs that you have available. But I really appreciate you pulling this so we can have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Caroline. I am scrolling to look to see if anybody else has a hand raised. We have several pages of people on the grid. So if you use the reaction, I can tell if you have your hand up. And I do not see any other comments on this. So I'm going to bring it back to council for a motion or discussion. Councilmember Castellano.
Thank you. And I appreciate that we are having the opportunity to publicly discuss this issue. You know, because I think it is something that we're not the only community that's wrestling with this. And so I think it's, we have a responsibility to bring the challenges to the public. You know, my my main thoughts are that we we need a safe parking space, parking area for people. And that really we're going to continue to literally, you know, chase this around the community until we have that. I know that in Arcata, they're currently implementing, implementing something. But I reached out to the city manager there just to feel like, how big is it going to be? Because, you know, it doesn't seem like there's room for for people in Eureka to go to Arcata and park there. You know, and nor, you know, I'm not saying that should be the solution anyway. But, you know, I think it's it's time for for us to really look at that. I don't feel that I can, you know, and that would, I think, really solve the the trash issues and the, you know, where do people use the restroom issues and things like that. You know, I was actually down at Shark Park a couple of days ago and met an eleven-year-old child who's, you know, living in a car down there. And, you know, I mean, my concern is that if we know where people are, we can actually support them, you know, that and and if we push them around or, you know, or, you know, make it difficult for them to find a safe place, we actually also make their lives more dangerous. And so I can't, you know, support this without being proactive about actually finding solutions to to this. So I would, you know, be more amenable to looking at this if we actually, if we move forward first with with a safe parking area. And let's see, you know, and also, you know, I mean, I know in our strategic visioning, we talked about code enforcement. We did also talk about a plan to address the 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 challenges and needs of the unhoused population. So to me, that that plan is, I suppose, more a priority to that in this particular circumstance.
Thank you, councilmember Castellano. Do you have any other? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, you know, councilmember Castellano is right. There is a need for for safe parking. However, I also think that needs to be a county issue. This is a county-level issue. It's it's a societal issue, right? I mean, this is go anywhere up and down the coast and you'll find the same situation, whether it be tents or RVs. People are, you know, having hard times. So yes, we got to figure this out. We got to, we got to get with our county representatives, our supervisors and other municipalities. Fortuna, you know, Arcata, it needs to be a group, a collective effort to to deal with, you know, the unhoused. I'll tell you, I use that trail behind railroad quite a bit. And what I've seen in the past month, besides a pit bull running down the trail at me, no owner around, and I'm a pretty big guy and, you know, I'm scared, you know? And I wonder, what if that had been, you know, some nice little old person walking their dog and not me? You know, I I picked up gravel getting ready to fight. And I watched the dog go back to a trailer with another pit bull, you know, both running loose. So the safety of the community, you know, at large is is an issue there. And so I have a really hard time putting off a decision on this. I watch a drug deal go down daily when I run that trail in an RV, you know, multiple RVs. I've seen sewage, you know, drain from an RV into Cooper Gulch numerous times and getting a lot of pictures of that. So it seems to be like we're entering another Palco Marsh scenario where it's just growing and growing. I see organ plates all the time now. I'm like, why are people deciding that this is a spot to be? And I'm just, you know, realize, I think we all realize that this is a larger problem. It's not just Eureka's problem and it needs to be a community solution, a larger than than Eureka. So I think, you know, restricting parking, like the captain said, you know, RVs that who knows who the owner is anymore? And seeing what's going on out there, I'm inclined to support, you know, adopting this and at the same time working on, how do we manage this situation? How do we develop a safe parking camping situation? I'm all for it, you know, when we work as a as a larger group than just the city. The city shouldn't be the one shouldering this, nor should just Arcata, you know? So I'll leave it at that for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members? Councilmember Brighell?
Excuse me. Well, I too spend a lot of time down at the Palco Marsh Trail. And I did spend a lot of time in Palco Marsh when Palco Marsh was an encampment. And I'm starting to see concerns. I do see drug dealing down there pretty regularly. There's paraphernalia in the street. I found, you know, between 25 and 30 whippets, you know, just right there, loose dogs, all those kinds of things that are safety issues. And, you know, I agree, one of the reasons I got involved in Palco Marsh was because of a child that was living down there. And because we were having conversations with them, we were able to get them into an apartment. Actually, it was more of a motel for a while and then into an apartment. So I appreciate that our city CSET workers and uplift are out there trying to make those arrangements daily with folks. You know, the the CSET are out every day patrolling that area and checking in with people. My concern too is that we're going to end up with another Palco Marsh Marsh situation in that regard. And I, you know, I've I talked to the city manager about locations for car parking. I totally support now a safe parking. It's the location is the challenging part. Where in our city is there property to do that? And so I agree that it is a bigger issue that we we do and Arcata shouldn't have to shoulder it. We do need to find these locations. And again, we did approach churches in the past and people were completely unwilling at that time to be of support, which is really disappointing, frankly. So in an effort to, oh, and then I also, you know, just a couple of other things. I had a friend that I was walking with who was. I had a friend that I was walking with who was waiting for me and a drug deal was going down and a guy like started to approach her to the point where I ended up, when I got there, called EPD to come take a report. She was terrified, didn't want to walk down there anymore. There was a time when a guy had dug a big, huge hole, you know, right next to his trailer and done this big art exhibit in this hole near the trail with all the dogs. And it's just, it's not, that's not what it's designed to do. And, you know, my hope is, just like with Palco Marsh, that people will be willing to accept services. And as we know, you cannot manufacture willingness. You can talk to somebody 30 times. It might take the hundredth time to make that connection. And I see our CSET team and our uplift team, the vigilance that they maintain to communicate with people. And so, and to try and support them however they can, getting them into treatment, getting them into some sort of help. And I'm sure that, that, you know, with the parenting situation, that certainly that could be brought forward and get those kids housed. That's, you know, that's dependent on the parents to want that support. We can't make them, unfortunately. So with that, I do support this. As I said, I'm down there quite a bit. And I, it's unfortunate that we have to go this, this route. But it's just hard to, it's hard to look at the safety issues and ignore them.
Councilmember Araya.
Thanks, all. This is a, this is a tough one and a helpful conversation. I agree that it was important to pull this one for discussion. And I, I really hear our staff and recognize that we can't just expend police resources over and over and over and over again without some more structural change here. To kind of add to experiences there, I've also had trail experiences there on roller skates. Something about roller skates really makes some dogs want to chase more, I think, even than when I'm on foot. I don't know, it's the sound of the wheels or just that you're going and moving in a different way. I have also been chased by a dog there. And thankfully, it was a dog that when I just yelled no, it stopped. So fortunate for me, that was, that happened that way. But, you know, I, I did an aid station for the Humboldt Bay Marathon there at the intersection of Railroad and Del Norte. And a lot of the runners who were stopping to drink water commented, especially ones from out of the area, on how that was the scary section of the trail and how did I draw the lucky straw to get that section? And, you know, we tried to make it as festive and positive as possible and did some cleanup of the area before we even set up our tents. And, and it was still, it felt a little scary in, in the middle of the day with hundreds of people over several hours running through. So, you know, there are the bathrooms there, which I think is making it an attractive location. I, I don't know if people who are camping in their vehicle are using the bathroom. I know there's certainly a lot of incidences of the volunteer trail stewards having to pick up, you know, waste or, or report it because a lot of them, as volunteers, don't feel safe doing that, which, which makes perfect sense. I spoke to their volunteer trail stewards recognition group on, on Sunday, this last Sunday, and was gonna just give like a thank you so much for all you do kind of short speech. And it turned into more of a conversation about what we could do about this. And, you know, reflecting some of the concerns that they have because they're down there more than just once a month, most of the volunteers are down there weekly doing cleanup of the trail and often of the stretch between, of Railroad between Del Norte and the Werfenger. But, but actually a little further south than that. So the, the area that we're really focusing on right now. That said, I, I hear the concerns like, well, is this just going to push the issue to another part of town? I think that's completely valid. So, so my questions are really, I want to try to get at whether there are any other options we could be talking about? You know, cutting this up more as far as where parking is and isn't allowed? You know, making it shorter stretches so there are fewer vehicles? You know, perhaps converging on the same locations? You know, perhaps something like having a 48 hour limit or even allowing no parking, but, you know, perhaps the authority to, when inter, interacting with people to give like a 72 hour temporary permit? I don't know if any of those options, you know, if you're, if you're talking about someone who's just passing through and they broke down and they, you know, just need a little time to get their act together and then they're going to be able to, you know, move to another destination, perhaps a temporary permit would be an option. So, you know, I think my, my first instinct is to say like, let's just chunk this up more. And then, you know, when we inevitably have that happen elsewhere in the city, to try to limit concentration of number of vehicles so that it's inherently dispersed. Because that's what I hear staff saying is that we need the impact to be dispersed and hear neighbors saying the same thing. And I don't want to say that that's a solution to the issue long term. But I wonder if that has any merit? So, you know, I think EPD and, you know, Scott Elsmar, anyone who feels like they could speak to that?
Do you may have a response for Councilmember Araya on that?
I apologize. I had to step out for a second there with my kid. So I got, I got the very end of it. I missed it if you were reaching out to me, Scott. I apologize.
That's okay. I'll recap very briefly. I'm wondering if we can chunk up this area a little bit more as far as where overnight parking is not allowed? To potentially limit the number of vehicles that could be present? And maybe something like a 48 hour or 72 hour limit? Just because recognizing that there's a lot of vehicles there and they're going to go somewhere else? You know, what, what are your thoughts about that?
So there's our, there's currently a 72 hour limit where they, that's already on the MUNI code. So that, that's already, you know, a thing out there. Our concerns are based on what the, kind of the environmental, the constraints are out there. You have businesses on one side of the street, but where most of this parking is occurring is adjacent to the trail, adjacent to woodlands and those things. That leaving one area open opposed to not the others is going to probably focus a lot of vehicles in that one remaining area. This area seems to be different than the rest of town because it does have, where all the vehicles are parking are away from businesses. Those things are adjacent, these areas that are open and such and wooded. So I can't support taking one section out of it because I don't know if one section's any different than the rest. So I, originally, like I said, we looked at this and drew a much larger footprint. And then we toned it down thinking, let's, let's deal with the issue, the, the streets that are all very similar and have the same type of issues. So could it be chunked up? Sure, it could. Do I think it would solve anything? No, I think it'd probably focus it all in one area. But that's just my thoughts.
And I'd like to, I agree with what Scott's saying on that. I think I wanted to chime in earlier on this too, but a lot of people are talking about the safety of trail users. I, I think there's just as big a concern as this type area of town being industrial, large trucks going in and out, in and out of businesses, driving down. There have been vehicle community member, you know, that are in that area getting hit by cars like this. It's just an industrial area for this type of use with the type of vehicles that are coming in and out of there are not safe for the individuals that are staying in that area as well. It's not just the users and the inappropriate activities down there, but those people, community members that are staying down there. It's not safe for them to be in that industrial area with the type of vehicles that go in and out of it.
Yeah, I hear that. You know, when I, when I say like chunk it up, I mean like, you know, some concept like red curbs with, with perforations with, you know, with non-red curbs in the mix. I, I, I'm really just spitballing here because I don't know. I mean, this is a really large area where there's such a high concentration of vehicles that's obviously posing a problem. So we need to do something about that. I, I'm on board with that. But, you know, that impact is not going to go away. And we are not poised to create a safe parking, you know, please come here and park now and we'll provide hot showers and, you know, porta potties. And, and that's, that's nowhere on the horizon right now. So I, I wonder if some effort to, to actually punctuate the area with, you know, like no parking spaces essentially, rather than yes, park here spaces could simply lessen the concentration. And I hear Scott saying, not really. But I'm going to push on this one because I think it's worth thinking about.
So Scott is correct. I mean, we can do that, whether it's effective or not, is yet to be seen. I think that we did talk about alternatives to this, about red curves and making it all red or portions of it red and those types of things. Well, there are times, and that's why we left it available for commercial vehicles because there are certain times of the year where even those wooded areas are occupied by commercial vehicles. And there are needs at certain time of the year for that area to be used by commercial vehicles. And so that's the reason why we still left it available for commercial vehicles because of all the businesses that are down there. And I know there's even newer businesses that have gone into the Schneider Dock and that's just going to increase the, the need for, you know, parking for big trucks and those type of things. I know that Schmidt Bowers property is, is looking to be sold. There's other things that are going on down there with, you know, cannabis and other businesses that are moving in there. And if we made it red, we may not have enough parking for larger vehicles.
Could there be a parking by permit? And then the commercial vehicles can easily get it? But also you can make it available to a certain number of RVs? And then you would have record of who's there?
So parking permit is a tricky, it's a tricky, tricky stance. Who's going to manage it? How are they going to manage it? And, you know, it's public parking in a sense, so trying to permit it for those folks and not, it, it's a, it's a tricky thing. We haven't seen much success with it in that sense. And I haven't seen it, we haven't seen other areas do, try to tackle the problem with that, that type of solution. It's typically similar to what we've been doing.
And if I could, Madam Mayor, jump in to add on to what Scott said. The other difficulty with permit parking in areas frequented by commercial vehicles is that a lot of those commercial vehicles are coming in from out of the area. You know, they're here for delivery overnight, that kind of thing, and then they leave. It's not like in a residential area near Eureka High, for instance, where you've got people who live there who obtain a parking permit to park, you know, near their house.
All right.
I just want to,
I would like to encourage us to sort of wrap this up, but you can ask another question. But then somebody needs to make a motion to do something, if y'all don't mind. Thanks. Go ahead, Natalie.
Well, I think we're getting somewhere with this to, to permit or not to permit or to red curb or not to red curb. I don't want to create any additional burden for staff having to go out and issue permits. So I sort of, I, I was thinking out loud with that idea and I retract that idea. But the idea of there being some red curbs and perhaps signage that says, you know, like, commercial vehicle parking, you know, no, no parking in red curb areas except commercial vehicles or something like that gets at the, the issue that I'm talking about. And then conceivably, any user could park for up to 72 hours on the places that are left. And to me, that sort of allows a little bit, limits the concentration, creates a mechanism for us to start to chip away at this, but without, you know, pushing everyone into whatever neighborhood or industrial area is next. And any, any value there? I'm really trying here, y'all.
I just reiterate what Scott says. We can do what council directs us to do. Whether that'll be successful and concentrated in other areas is yet to be determined. But council chooses to go in that direction, that's something we can definitely look into.
Councilmember Castellano.
I'm going to try making a motion.
Thank you.
It's a long one and it's not the one on the paper, so hold on to your hats. Okay, I move to adopt a resolution of the city council creating a no parking between 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Commercial vehicles accepted restriction on Railroad Avenue from Del Norte to 450 degrees north of 14th Street, Del Norte Street between Felt Street and Railroad Avenue, and Truesdale Street between Broadway and Christie Street to be implemented April 1st, 2021 with a section, a section on Truesdale Street between Broadway and Christie Street to be implemented immediately and for implementation of a twice weekly monitored dumpster until that time on April 1st, 2021. With direction to release an RFP for a, sorry, that would be a non-police monitored dumpster. With direction for a, to release an RFP for a monitored parking area by November 16th, 2021, while working in conjunction with other cities in the county to create a countywide solution.
Did you capture that, Pam?
I did not, but I knew that you can't hear me anyway, can you?
Oh, we can't hear you. It says you're not muted, but now I can't hear you at all. Sorry.
Yeah.
Before, before we try to really capture that, is there anybody who wants to, I mean, is there anybody who caught all of that and wants to second it? Let's start with that. You want to reread it?
I'm wondering why April 1st, 2021?
It was six months.
Testing, one, two, three, testing.
2022. It was going, it was going so well.
I didn't catch it either, Leslie. I was with you. I was following you and forgetting we were at the end of 2021.
It was like an April Fool's sort of joke, but not really. No, sorry. I'll repeat it. It's a try. It's a try at trying to kind of weave all of these concepts together in a way that addresses the challenges we're, we're talking about. Okay. I'll speak more slowly also because I, I know it's a lot. I move to adopt a resolution of the city council creating a no parking between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Commercial vehicles except in restriction on Railroad Avenue from Del Norte Street to 450 degrees north or feet, I guess, 450 feet north of 14th Street, Del Norte Street between Felt Street and Railroad Avenue, and Truesdale Street between Broadway and Christie Street to be implemented April 1st, 2022. With minus, or, or with an area on Felt Street between Del Norte and Hofflorn Streets to be implemented immediately that would still allow for commercial vehicles. I forgot that part the first time. With this, to also implement a twice weekly monitored dumpster until April 1st, 2022, that would be monitored by someone other than EPD. And with direction to release an RFP for a monitored parking area by November 16th, 2021, while working in conjunction with other cities in the county to create a countywide solution.
Can I, just in case this goes forward, I'd like to ask some clarification. Twice weekly monitored dumpster means what?
It'd basically be a dumpster that was delivered for a certain amount of time with a monitor, a dumpster monitor, while, while it was there.
With the expectation that people would put the trash into the dumpster?
Yeah, yeah. So basically the people who are parking in that area would know that there would be a dumpster there that could be accessed twice a week during the day, picked up at the end of the day. We do many amazing things.
Just asking for clarification.
Yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Bragel. And we're looking for a second before discussion. So do we have a second or is this going to die on? Second on this one? I don't see a second. It was a valiant effort though, Leslie. All right. Do we have another motion? Councilmember Bragel.
So I would like to move that we adopt a resolution, create-
I would like to move that we adopt a resolution creating a no parking between 10:00 PM. You know, the, the one thing, there were things in your motion, Councilmember Castellano, that I did appreciate. Um, you know, uh, one of those being whatever you said about, so I guess I'm saying that to let you know that if there was potentially a friendly amendment to speak more to the car, uh, camping, I might be interested in discussing that, just FYI. But I'm going to make a motion to adopt a resolution creating a no parking between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Commercial vehicles accepted, uh, registration, restriction on Railroad Avenue. I can't see a thing. From Del Norte Street to 450 degrees north of 14th Street, Del Norte Street between Felt Street and Railroad Avenue, Felt Street between Del Norte and Hawthorne Streets, and Truesdale Street between Broadway and Christie Street.
All right, just as presented. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any additional conversation or discussion on this item? If not, we'll go ahead and take a vote.
Can you hear me? Are, am I working?
Yes, and you're not.
All right, very good. Would you like me to do the roll call vote?
Please do.
All righty, Councilmember Castellano.
No.
Councilmember Moulton.
Yes.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Do we have any room for discussion or friendly amendments at this time?
No, we passed the discussion part. You didn't hear the discussion?
I, I, I heard, no, I guess I didn't realize we were moving on. Um, well, I'd still like to ask for a friendly amendment, so I guess that can go with my motion or with a vote. Um, would you consider the, uh, addition of the RFP?
We do that as a second amendment. It'll be a sec, it'll, can we do that as a separate motion?
Uh, right now we have, um, we're in the middle of a vote. Um, so I would recommend that, uh, if you wanted to add, um, give direction to staff for an RFP, we do it after we take the vote on this resolution.
Gotcha. Um, yes.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yes.
Councilmember Brugel? Four yes votes, Councilmember Castellano dissenting, motion carries.
And yes, Councilmember Arroyo, I would be interested in moving forward with a motion to, um, put out an RFP for a car safe site.
Okay, so would you like to make that motion, uh, Councilmember Arroyo? To direct, or do we want to just direct staff for that? A motion is more official.
I'd just like to ask staff to bring back information. That seems, uh, does that work for you?
Yeah, because there's gonna, it's pretty generic just to say to put out an RFP for a site, there's funding considerations, location considerations. So I think we should bring back something to discuss with council to frame what that RFP looks like.
Sounds like a future agenda item.
Um, okay, so that, do we all agree that, um, we want to follow up with this?
Yes.
Direction?
One little thing I would like to, to question would be, um, timeline for that. I would like to have a timeline before the end of the year. If possible.
To bring this back for discussion, no, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are going to move on to, um, our ordinances and resolutions, and I want to announce at this time that, uh, C3 has been pulled. We're not going to be, um, we're going to bring that back at another meeting. Um, but we're going to go on to C1, and I'm going to ask Director Folger to talk about the 2021 salary schedule update.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening, uh, council members. Um, the city's salary schedule is routinely updated and approved by council as required by CalPERS when there's adjustments to, um, class and comp, um, uh, positions within the city's classification, uh, plan. Um, when the salary schedule contains changes to executive salaries, however, it is a requirement that these changes are reported orally. The changes to the salary schedule, um, before you tonight reflect routine changes to classifications and pay rates, including the previously negotiated and approved 2% cost of living adjustment that went into effect on July 1st of this year and has been applied, um, to salary ranges for all permanent city classifications, including the salaries for the following executive positions. That is the city manager, the chief of police, the public works director, assistant city manager slash city clerk, community services director, finance director, and human resources director. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution approving the city's updated salary and pay rate schedule for all regular full-time and regular part-time positions, titles, and classifications to reflect routine classification and compensation changes, and the 2% cost of living adjustment, uh, that was approved in, on July 1st. And thank you. I'm available if you have any questions.
All right. So you may have any questions for Director Folger. Okay, I will, uh, ask now then if there's anybody in the, uh, public who would like to make a comment on this item. I'm looking up and down the participant list and I, do I see a hand? Nope, no hands are being raised, so I'll bring it back to council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Arroyo.
I move staff recommendation.
Thank you very much.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Seeing then, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Brugel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
So now we're going to move on to item C2, uh, Assistant City Manager Powell, who has a working, uh, audio system now can talk to us about bill number 1005, Public Education and Government Access Channel Support Amendment.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor and Council. This is the, uh, second time this ordinance has, um, come before you. This is the adoption of a housekeeping issue for our, um, our cable franchise and the ability for our, um, for Access Humble to can you, continue to collect, uh, peg fees which are, um, uh, would expire should we not adopt this extension to the ordinance. So with that, I recommend that you, uh, adopt the ordinance. And this recommendation does need to be read.
All right, and do we have any questions? Seeing none, I will go out to the audience and see if there's any public comment. Looking, I do not see any public comment on this item. Oh, I do. Uh, Libby Maynard.
Thank you. Um, I'm Chair of the Board of Access Humble, and I'm calling, I'm asking you to approve this. It's a fairly routine matter. Um, and for all the excellent service that Access Humble gives to the community and to the cities and governments, um, keep funding us, please.
Thank you very much. And that is the only public comment I see, so I will bring it back to the council for comments or motion. Councilmember, oh, go ahead, Councilmember Moulton.
Were you going to make the motion? I'll make the motion. Uh, let's see. I move that we waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 1005 dash CS and ordinance of the city of Eureka, adding section 114 dot 63 dot B subsection 5 to title XI, sorry, that's 11, chapter 114, Public Educational and Government Access Channel Capacity Support, Interconnection, and Signal Carriage.
A second.
Thank you very much. Do we have any more discussion on this item? Seeing then, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Moulton.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Brugel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right, we are moving right along. We're going to go to item C4 now. Teleconference public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. And, um, Assistant City Manager Powell.
Yeah, so sorry, I haven't had a chance with all of my commotion going on here in the chambers to pick up, uh, pull up the agenda summary, but I'll make it short and concise for you. AB 371, um, 361 allowed for the, uh, um, let me go back here a little bit. Hold on just one sec. All right, AB 361, uh, is recent legislation that will allow for council meetings to continue to be held in an emergency capacity through Zoom or in a hybrid. Uh, we can, uh, but in order to do either a hybrid or a Zoom meeting, uh, there's certain conditions that must be met, and those were outlined in the agenda summary. Uh, one of them is to allow the public into the Zoom meeting to make it very open and accessible, not to require written comments, um, only prior to the meeting, but that the public's allowed to interact. Uh, we are currently meeting all of those requirements. This resol- we must adopt a resolution or make these findings every 30 days to be able to continue on with Zoom meetings. Uh, so even if we choose to move forward in a hybrid type situation uh, for the next meeting or, or, you know, throughout the rest of the year, we do need to make, uh, these findings and adopt a resolution per AB 371. So, uh, with that, we're seeking direction on how you would like, first of all, if you want to go completely back to in-person meetings. Secondly, if you want to consider a hybrid meeting, uh, that would, uh, have part of council and the public in the chambers. And third, if you want to come, um, continue completely by Zoom. So those, so with that, um, those three options in mind, we're asking you to consider, um, adopting the resolution.
And just to clarify, um, the hybrid option, we're still checking to make sure that's, uh, going to be okay.
And Mayor, I would, I was able to seek some guidance on that, um, just before the meeting. And it does appear that, uh, as long as we adopt the resolution, we are allowed to go forward with a hybrid solution.
Perfect.
Yes.
Just down to the wire feedback. Okay, does anybody have questions? No, it doesn't look like anybody has questions, so I will see if there's any comments from the public and then we will bring it back and discuss this item. Does anybody from the public wish to comment on this item? Going through several times just to make sure everybody has a chance, and I see no hands, so I'm going to bring it back to council. Councilmember Bauer, then Arroyo.
Yeah, I would just say I'm, I'm in favor of really anything we want to do, uh, as a council, but I, I would like to see a hybrid option. You know, maybe after November 1st, seems like things are getting better. Um, and maybe we'll feel more comfortable, you know, proceeding into, moving back into the chambers, um, you know, whoever's comfortable. So having the option, to me, seems like a good thing, but maybe we, maybe we wait until November to start it. Thanks.
All right, we have somewhere to start now. Does anybody have anything they want to add to that? Councilmember Brugel.
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did. I put you all in order and then Kim raised her hand. I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to let you go first, Kim, and then we'll go back to Natalie.
Well, I was just going to say, um, that I know that Arcata is currently doing, um, council in chambers, public comment on um, Zoom or phone call, and I didn't know if folks might be interested in that at all until, uh, it can certainly be evaluated in 30 days, but, um, I don't know about having a full room of people, um, yet. I'd still like to watch the numbers a little more.
Um, I would just like to add that, um, on, uh, the new assembly bill, it's my understanding that if council is in chambers, we do have to, um, give an opportunity for the public to be into chambers now.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Arroyo, thank you for being so generous.
It was easy. Um, so I just, um, concur with, uh, Councilmember Bauer. I like the idea of, um, returning to, um, the chambers if we wish in November, and I don't want anyone to feel pressured to do that. Um, now that we have the hybrid technology option available. Um, I personally would, um, appreciate the opportunity to flex that to come to the council chambers whenever possible, but if, um, tonight, for example, I'm really headachey and, um, barely, barely able to think straight because of it, um, and I, you know, I don't, um, I'm vaccinated, but I, I don't know for sure that I'm well, so, um, to protect others, um, you know, I would like the option to continue to participate remotely. So I really think this opens up a cool and exciting new realm of possibilities for us and for our boards and commissions, um, who, you know, I often, um, I'm amazed at how many meetings take place in city hall and, um, you know, I think it allows for people who have compromised immune systems, um, to continue to participate in, um, public fora and for people to serve on those commissions who may not um, be able to physically come to city hall. So I, I'm thrilled about this. Um, I hope it happens beyond 2024. I hope this is our, a new option for people to engage and participate. Um, but I personally would enjoy being in, in council chambers with you whenever possible. Um, so I, I'm in favor of it and I like that, um, prospect of returning in November.
All right, Councilmember Moulton, then Castellano.
I'm also in favor, in favor of a, a highly flexible model on the bigger picture. This whole situation has opened up accessibility to a group of people who could never make it into participating in local government before, and I hope that we don't lose that. Also, as we look at varying levels of, varying rates of vaccination and varying levels of protection of the different vaccines and different variants coming out, that I think we just need to leave ourselves flexibility wherever we can.
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
Um, I, I agree with the general sentiments being expressed, uh, and, and I'm personally excited to be in council chambers, um, whenever I can be there, um, which hopefully will be most of the time. And, um, yeah, and I think, you know, I, I think that we can find ways in which the public can be there, maybe limiting the number of people in the room and having some seating in the hallway or, you know, or I don't, you know, I, I'm imagining there's some options in terms of how people are seated that we'll want to kind of look at and play with. Um, but otherwise, yeah, just really appreciate, um, everyone bringing this forward and, and really trying hard, yeah, you know, just thank you, Assistant City Manager Powell and, and City Manager Slattery for, you know, working so hard to find these solutions and develop them. And without, I'll make a motion. Is that, oh, wait.
We need to, uh, Kim has a comment, but do we need to make a motion on this or is it just direction?
Uh, we do need a motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, so I'm going to go with, uh, to Kim. Oh, that's right, the resolution part, sorry. Uh, Councilmember Brugel.
Well, I just wanted to say that I too am fine being in person. The issue that I have is that I do work with kids that are non-vaxxed, and that's why I really try hard to stay out of big situations as much as possible and get tested a lot. So, um, I like the opportunity to be, um, although that's going to change with Governor Newsom's new, um, new legislation, uh, I like the opportunity of being able to do both and, um, just for safety sake.
All right, then I'll let Councilmember Castellano make the motion.
Okay, I'll try, I'll try a more.
See how long you can make it.
Um, I'll go with this staff suggestion to adopt a resolution of the city council authorizing the city to implement teleconference public meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361.
Do I have a second on that?
A second.
All right, and any more discussion on it? All right, can we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Sure, and Mayor and Council, I just would like to add that even once, um, you know, the emergency situation goes away and all of councils back in chambers and we don't need the, um, uh, emergency resolution pursuant to Bill 361, we can still allow the public to participate through Zoom, um, for comment. And that's something that the council can make a determination on at that time. But we're set up and ready to go, and they could certainly do it. All right, with that, Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Molton?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bregel? Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right, now, um, I want to say we are getting ready to go into our reports and action items. Those are gonna be the two probably longest discussions of the evening. We generally have a break at eight. I'm wondering if we want to push through the first one and then take a break after meeting one, and then we want a break now, and then we're gonna just do the two big ones right after each other. Okay, um, because it's probably gonna run pretty late, can we do five minutes? All right, see back here at seven, actually, let's just see back here, Nate, that's seven minutes.
Yes, thank you Mayor Seaman, and good evening again, Mayor and council. Um, at the July twentieth meeting, council directed staff to, um, look into an oversight board for the city of Eureka. Um, staff had recommended that since we already had the advisory board, that we'd make amendments to the existing citizen advisory board ordinance. Um, council was looking for this and providing direction to provide more transparency and public input into, um, review of policies, procedures, complaints, and those types of things. Currently, the citizen advisory board, um, reviews particular investigations or complaints that have already been reviewed, and the chief brings back to them. Council wanted something more inclusive of all complaints and, and, um, policies and procedures. And so staff looked at, um, other examples across the state. We looked at Pasadena, we looked at Palo Alto, we looked at Santa Cruz, kind of combined some of those efforts into, um, an amendment of the existing advisory board. Um, the changes that were proposed and, and overall changes are that the entirety of the complaints and, um, policies and procedures, uses of force, those type of things would go to the oversight board, um, for input. Um, we also found that a lot of other agencies, um, hired the services of an independent police auditor, and, um, we felt that this would be appropriate for us. Based on the research that we've done, the model that staff is recommending they're looking into is developing an RFP, um, for, um, proposals to be the police auditor for the city of Eureka. Um, staff would put together a draft RFP to kind of define what we're looking for in that police auditor, bring it back to council. Council would provide input on that RFP, and then we distribute that RFP. Um, the police auditor would come and be hired out of the city manager's office, so it would be independent from, um, the police department, and the city manager's office would have oversight of the police auditor. That police auditor would review, um, the same complaints and uses of force and policies and procedures and provide input back to the oversight board on their opinion of, you know, what should happen. The ultimate authority would still remain with the police chief as to what would happen, um, for these. But, um, all of those, um, complaints and different items that typically go to the police department would still be reviewed by the oversight board. So we provided a draft, um, amendment to the citizen advisory board. This is just being presented to council for discussion and direction. Um, and so we put that draft together, it's in your agenda, and we're requesting, um, input, feedback, and any sort of adjustments that council would like to see on the amendment. So with that, staff is available for any questions.
All right, questions? Councilmember Molton.
I have one question and then a couple of, uh, comments or things that I think should be in there that have been left out. Do we split this?
We'll add the comments after public comment.
Okay, then my question, thank you, then my question is just about fiscal impact.
So based on the, on the independent police auditors that we have seen, um, it's not extensive. Um, larger cities, I believe Pasadena's was seventy-five thousand dollars a year, um, for those services, and they provided the same range of services that we're looking into. Um, so we won't know until we receive the proposals back. But, um, I believe in Citizen City Manager Powell, they range anywhere between seventy and eighty thousand dollars a year for the services of the, of the IPA.
So the board itself is made of volunteers and, but the IPA is the only paid person in this setup?
Yeah, as far as the, um, the makeup of the board, as far as the number of people on the board and how they're selected, that was still maintained the same, that the, um, we go through the process where they provide an application to the mayor. The mayor would make recommendations, and the council would approve those recommendations.
That's my only question, thank you.
Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I, I just had a question, and this is, um, a, a more robust, um, board, if you, if you, if you might say that, um, has pretty serious, um, responsibility. And I, I know most of our boards, commissions, you know, it's, it's typically, you know, mayor proposes people, but, and no offense to you, Mayor Seaman at all, I just wonder about, you know, future, future councils. You know, would we be, would they be comfortable with? I know that the city council are, would be the ultimate decision makers, but I feel like a council, um, may have, you know, potential people they would want to see on board of such a, such a, uh, board. I just wondered if that's something we could, and maybe that's a question for, for, uh, City Manager Slattery. Did you have, in your research, did you see other municipalities have that kind of structure where the mayor brings, you know, recommendations to the city council versus the council? Or maybe there's a, a general outreach for volunteers, and the council reviews those applicants and then comes up with a list of people?
There's a wide range, just, you know, similar, the reason why we kept it this way is because that's similar to our other boards and commissions, and we kept it the same. It can be changed. There's a wide range, when we did the research, there's ones as elaborate as developing a committee. Council develops a committee, the committee receives applicants, the committee makes recommendations for those applicants. There's also models where individual council members select, um, board members and, and want them on, you know, the, the advisory board. So that's open for discussion. One thing that I did, another change was, um, background checks, um, are currently done by EPD. This, this would change that so that a third party would be doing the background checks. And so that would be, um, an additional expense, probably a pretty nominal expense, but it would be an additional expense.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Castellano.
Um, I'm just wondering if you could speak to, or any, any staff could speak as opposed to kind of why communities have adopted this model and sort of, um, success rates that have, that are kind of in the landscape around, around this model.
So I'm sure the chief could chime in on this, but, you know, we reached out to, um, since we're familiar with him, the police chief of Santa Cruz. Um, this has been in place for them, I believe, since two thousand and six. And when he became chief, he kind of made some changes to it. Um, it used to be an auditor that, um, I believe went through the, 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 the police department and was hired by them, and then it got changed when he was there so that that auditor was, um, hired by somebody else. It is a pretty typical, um, uh, setup. It's not always that that auditor reports to an oversight board. It may just report directly to the chief. In some instances, I believe that's, um, for, uh, Santa Cruz, it, it reports to a subset of another committee that is formed. But yeah, that's, a lot of the ones that we saw that we felt were consistent with what council was directing us to do had, um, police auditors. Steve, Che, Cap, Chief Watson, excuse me, do you have anything to provide for that?
I don't have the data in front of me. I know that I looked at an auditor actually a couple of years ago, uh, because I heard about that. I met the one that was Santa Cruz's auditor at the time. Uh, it wasn't cost feasible back under our old budget. Um, I believe that the auditor models or an auditor hybrid model are generally considered the most successful versus models where the oversight committee has subpoena powers and their own investigation powers. Um, there's some data with issues with those. So like auditor, auditor hybrid model, uh, probably would be with what you're looking for, the way to go. And something again, and I'm not trying to comp too much, but, you know, implemented, you know, effectively can, can be something I very much can work with.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Yeah, I, I had a question about, um, you know, when looking at the, um, the language of the proposed ordinance. Well, uh, I'll, I'll ask a couple. One is about the frequency with which the auditor would conduct a full review or full audit, I guess, of, um, of practices and policies. It, it doesn't specify here, um, what seems like the most reasonable timeframe for that or frequency for that.
So we could add more specific language, um, to that, or we could also include that in the RFP and whatever the professional services agreement that we end up coming up with the auditor, um, to determine timeframes. And Captain Watson, I mean Chief Watson, geez, sorry.
Uh, you know, one of the realities I think we're gonna run up with, so there needs to be a degree of flexibility, in my opinion, for the auditor, is going to, as my understanding under this model, they'll have access to anything and everything that they want, right? Um, so policies, training, personnel complaints, citizen complaints, and internal investigations, critical incidences like officer-involved shootings, all of that. But you're gonna run into a capacity issue, and you're also gonna run into a capacity issue with how much the oversight committee can actually review. Um, we have some strict timelines by law that have to be followed. There are policies that are rolled out, dozens of amendments every single year, often dozens of, um, new legislative changes and requirements from post and from, uh, the elected, you know, the legislator, legislature. And, uh, we have, we have to get those out quickly by law with time to train people or there's a high liability and, and possibility of breaking the law. So I think that there just needs to be, there, there needs to be some openness for the auditor to, to choose what they want to look at and work within that because they will not be able to do everything. But I won't be, I would not be controlling what they look at or they don't look at or anything like that. It would be open house, uh, for them to come in, you know, with that kind of independent, uh, type of things. This is something to keep in mind, be careful about, if you're paying too much, we're gonna run into a wall.
Sure, sure, okay, that's helpful. Yeah, that, that kind of clarifies why there's not a specific timeframe prescribed. Um, uh, the, the other question I had was, was, and the section about the board's purpose and objectives, there's ten listed there, and, um, that, that's a robust list, and I'm excited about the prospect of folks being able to weigh in on these matters. Um, and I wondered about, um, the number eight is demystifying police internal affairs and complaint investigations, and I, I wonder if we could be a little more clear about for, for whom they are demystified? Is it, um, for the public? Um, is that, um, and maybe that's a question for the council, but staff, do you have any thoughts about what that's getting at?
I think it's getting at that purpose for the, the, the board itself, um, so that they have an understanding of how that works. Um, I'm sure similar to the citizen advisory board, there'll be, you know, annual reports that are potentially given by this oversight board, and they can provide that to the public, their understanding of how those things work. So initially, it'd be for the oversight board, and then through those annual reports, you'd probably give the public a better understanding of how they work.
Does that click for you, Chief Watson?
Yes, I think that City Manager is accurate. Um, with SB fourteen twenty-one and our ability to finally release certain major misconduct and/or officer-involved shootings, for instance, the public now actually gets to see the entire process, uh, including all of the, the legal aspects, police officer bill of rights, all of that. So that, that is helping. But through this process, um, you know, it's increased in transparency, uh, increased accountability, and the ability for the auditor and the oversight committee to be able to essentially report back to both council and the public via that process, you know, I think is part of the demystifying that. Because a lot of people have no clue, and it's never really talked about. But now that they get a glimpse behind the curtain, uh, without breaking confidentiality laws, they can share more about the process, how the process works, and things like that.
Hey, thank you.
All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, I don't, don't see any questions. I didn't miss you, Councilmember Castellano, did I? Um, and so I'm gonna.
Mayor, may I? May I comment?
You may. We always want to hear from the attorney. The attorney has something to say, we will always listen.
So what, the one, the question came up as to the appointing process, and that actually appears to be governed by the charter, uh, which provides for the power of the city council to create advisory or appellate boards, commissions, and committees. Uh, and that sentence is followed by, "The members thereof shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council, uh, subject to various requirements," so.
So it would change, you'd have to change the municipal code in order to?
Uh, yeah, you'd have to change the charter, which we know is a pretty laborious process, so.
That's why we have our him to correct the city manager when he makes mistakes. Thank you, Bob.
That's okay.
Um, all right.
We're still on straight and narrow.
With that, I am, Councilmember Bregel, you have another question?
I do. Um, I'm just curious, so in an email we got, there was a question about, um, citizen complaints. So do the, do the public, do they actually have to file, um, citizen complaints directly to the IPA for investigation? Or are those going to be still brought through?
There, there is a requirement that they go to EPD, and so they will still go to EPD. There'll just be another review of that.
Okay, and then it's my understanding to, um, as a question, the makeup of the board will change. So former law enforcement will no longer be able to be on the board, is that true?
Currently, that's how that is written, but that is up to council discretion.
Thank you. Uh, Count S, Chief?
Uh, real quick, just to recap, one is all that this does is give citizens, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Manager, but I believe I got this right. So already, obviously, if, any citizen can make a complaint or accommodation to the Eureka Police Department. We've made that a very easy, open process. We have online, drop it off, we'll take it over the phone. If there's an auditor in place, they could, uh, make a complaint to the auditor, who then is required to forward it so that we can investigate it. Or they could make it to a member of the oversight committee, as I understand the way it's written. And again, they need to forward it through, I don't know if they go through the auditor or directly to me, but it's just additional pathways. But ultimately, they have to land at my office so I can sign them out to be investigated. Then, of course, the auditor can, can look at all of those as they come in and monitor the progress of the investigation, the outcome, things like that. That's part of their function, and they also report back, as I understand it, to the oversight committee on some of this. Uh, and the oversight committee, if they have a complaint they're interested in, could go to the auditor to say, you know, to look at it further or have questions and things like that. And then the other question you asked was, um, it's a little confusing the way it's written in the, the current, um, draft of the ordinance about former police. I actually took it to mean, um, right in front of me, they couldn't have been part of an association that represented police, is the way that I took it. So maybe they were part of, uh, I don't know what that would, that would be. So it kind of opens it up a little on my mind. You, could you be a retired cop from somewhere else, let's say, another agency, and still serve on it, no longer actively serving and not part of a group that had, um, represented sworn police officers? It says, "Current or former employee official or representative of an employee association representing sworn police officers." It says current or former employee official or representative of an employee association representing sworn police officers.
Wouldn't that include any sworn police officer?
That, that's just the issue with the interpretation. That needs to be clarified, or it's the will of the council that um you not have any former officers on there. Remember, you get a pick. So, you know, ultimately, the mayor will bring forward this, and council chooses who gets to be on it, you not. Do you want to completely close anyone that's ever been a cop? What if they become a public defender later? And have some unique insights to offer. I'm just gonna throw that, that out. That's your decision.
Councilmember Bregel and then Councilmember Castellano.
More clarifying questions. So the IP, the independent investigator, so will he, that person, whoever that person, will they be former law enforcement? Is that a necessity, or will they be just some random?
It won't be random, and this is why we'll bring back the RFP, but your typical IPA does have a background in either of a defender or um law enforcement, whatever it may be, but that can be whatever we desire. In that IPA, we can put into the RFP for qualifications and what we want to see in that. But we do have a draft RFP that Palo Alto put out, and we really like their program, and that's something we probably glean information from. But there's a lot of different consultants out there that perform this work. And it would be, uh, likely, it would be a consulting firm that has multiple employees, and typically, one of those employees that are assigned to our region, now that may change, or you know, they may move an employee around or something like that, but they typically assign one of their consultants to um City of Eureka, you know, police auditing.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Oh, just, it's not a question, but just the, the question at hand about, it's my understanding reading this, that someone who was a police officer of an org, of another organization could serve on this board, if so selected by the mayor.
I think that that's our decision to write it as clearly as we want, as we want to. Hopefully clearly. Does anybody have any other questions? All right, I am gonna call for a community input. Does anybody have a comment from the community? Please raise your hand, um, using the reaction button below, and I'm going to scroll through. Oh, Judy.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hey, miracles happen. Okay, I read through the proposed ordinance regarding changes to the advisory board, and I have some questions and concerns. Officers undergo months of basic academy, a long field training program, ongoing training on a variety of subjects, and have to keep up on myriad and ever-changing laws. To expect citizenry to be able to read, be read into what officers must know to be able to do their jobs seems kind of unrealistic. The rules following the release of information are complex. There are times when information can't be shared, and then it becomes shareable later. I think this city is lucky to have a police chief who gives the transparency he's legally allowed to, a department that is approachable and is responding to the changing environment, including officers who pick up a job traditionally not police work and pursue it with a dignified professional determination that improves the lives of many marginalized citizens. Additionally, I have to wonder if this board creates another avenue for the potential of confidential information to be leaked and employee rights to be violated. I didn't see any provision for the removal of a member that might be selected who had lied on their application or in their interview. I hesitated the idea of involving the community in the creation of policing standards and expectations. I saw what happened in Portland and Seattle, and it makes me uncomfortable. And how do you determine the qualifications and the background of the auditor you want to retain? Regarding policing as a whole, the profession seems to be under attack, and officers are bearing the brunt of actions that happen thousands of miles away that they didn't take part in, that don't reflect their values or the values of the department. I have a question regarding the community oversight board itself. If it's a good fit for our community, all of the other cities mentioned seem to be much larger. But in, in regard to police work, it's important to remember that bad news travels a lot faster than good news, and people are only too happy to share the times they feel they were treated poorly by police. It's seldom that good stories are shared because, let's face it, happy people in happy places don't call the police department. Thank you, EPD, for all you do every day.
Thank you. Caroline Griffith.
Hi, Caroline Griffith, resident of Eureka. Um, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. This is a really, like a really good step in the right direction to make sure that there is a lot of accountability and transparency in policing in our community. Uh, and I think that making this something that is codified in law will make it so that whoever the police chief that comes after Chief Watson, um, even if they don't have the same values as he does, there will still be this system in place to make sure that we are able as citizens to very clearly make complaints and to, to see that they are addressed. Um, I do, my, I, my red flags went up thinking about that all complaints go through the police chief, because though, as I said, it seems like Chief Watson really does want to um, run his office in the, the most up and up way, that doesn't mean that every single police chief that we have is going to be that way. And so to make sure that there isn't a, a way that those um complaints stop there and don't make it to the, the um police accountability board, I think it's really important to make sure that all them, that there's a clear message to for citizens to make complaints and that there's a very clear path that those get to the independent police auditor. Um, I'm excited to see where this goes, um, and what sort of actual ordinance you all bring back. So thank you for discussing it.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands. I'm looking. No other public comment, so I am going to bring it back to council for discussion and a motion. Councilmember Castellano.
Um, a couple of things, just, just, I mean, generally, I, I am supportive of this, and I appreciate it moving forward, and, and thank you, Chief Watson, for kind of your, your support of it as well. I think, I think actually it will really be a useful tool for the, the, the relationship between EPD and our community. Um. I'm just curious if we want to, and this is maybe a kind of a question or query for council in terms of the meetings. It says that special meetings on the board may be called by the chief of police or chairperson. And I also wondered if we wanted to include or a three-fifths vote of council um for those special meetings, um, should they need to be called. And then, um, I know, um, Councilmember Molton, I think, has some thoughts on this as well, but making sure that um, community members who, in particular, who represent kind of historically marginalized groups have an opportunity to present to the COB um, in terms of, you know, really, and I know this is something that Chief Watson has has been working on and has really made some advances toward in, in terms of, you know, making sure that policies and procedures take into account um, the experiences of groups that have been marginalized or experienced different kinds of oppression within our community or society. Um. And so, you know, some thought of that is to make sure that there would be some sort of monthly presentation by um, by groups in our community.
Right. Councilmember Molton, I know you did have some comments for it.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I would like to see written in here, codified, that there needs that there is a requirement that they, that the board meets with, um, representatives from historically marginalized populations. I don't know if, I understand that there's a lot and that monthly would probably not even cover it. Um, but I think that that timeline, when we're talking about doability, um, might be a bit much. I think, you know, regular, codified, quarterly, uh, something along those lines. I wouldn't be opposed to monthly. I'm just not sure if it's super realistic. Um, the other thing is that, um, I think critical incident review is very important. It's in the discussion and the summary, but it's not in the language, the draft language anywhere that I can find. So I see a report, um, reviewing, um, policies and complaints, but not critical incidents, use of force, things like that. Um, yeah, so that's my main thing. Critical incident review being added, and then mandating meetings with disenfranchised populations um, on a schedule. Uh, just a comment, um, I've, the reason I brought this up when I did, uh, is because I feel very strongly that citizen oversight directly for police officers or for the police is um necessary for transparency and accountability. This is not my response to any incidents that have happened, uh, whether in this city or another city, uh, any investigation, anything to do with the EPD specifically or how it's operated. I think that this is a protection that we need to put into law in place for the, the future health and accountability of our police department and our community.
Thank you, Councilmember Molton. Councilmember Royal.
Um, thank you for bringing this forward, and um, I think this is, this is good. I'm happy to hear that it has um pretty robust support. And um, I did want to bring up that, you know, the current or former employee, blah, 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 representing sworn police officers. To me, that's, um, I don't necessarily see the utility in that, because that's like, well, if you, to me, that reads like if you in some way worked for an organization that represented police officers either in court or, um, or you were heavily involved in your union, um, you wouldn't be able to participate. And, and to me, the, um, I don't know if I see the utility in, in that whole section, so I think the first three, like not being a current sworn police officer, a city employee or an EPD sworn employee makes sense. Um, a former EPD sworn employee, but, but that, the last provision there, provision E, um, I would just be fine with striking personally. Um, I think there could be some utility, um, to people with varying experiences, including, um, you know, uh, experiences as are described here, um, be, being part of it someday. Um, I, I would just also point out, normally I don't want to do this, but there's a kind of a, a lot of um, minor cleanup needed of this one, um, like it says. Uh, anyway, there, there are quite a lot of um things to just tighten up, and I think if it's an ordinance about oversight, um, and people will be reading it, um, because it's new and important, um, I just especially want it to, um, be free of typos and all that, so I won't point all of them out, um, but, um, I just like to ask that staff, um, give it another once-over for, um, cleanup of minor things, not changing any content, but, um, I will go ahead and make the motion to, um, approve. Uh, do I need to read the whole thing?
We don't actually need a motion. We just need consensus direction to, because we'll be bringing it back as an ordinance with the recommended changes and
I see.
And, and honestly, I've got it, um, so we were trying to show what the changes would look like from our current ordinance, and it actually maybe would be a little more concise and clearer if we repeal the entire previous uh advisory board, and then just come forward with a, a brand-new um, uh, oversight uh ordinance that'll include this information, but the information will be a little bit more concise.
Great.
I was gonna say the same thing, and if we are gonna be moving forward with the motion and um providing direction, I'd like to get consensus on the additional criteria that let, excuse me, Councilmember Castellano, Councilmember Molton, and Councilmember Arroyo suggested. So that would be the special um meetings that can be called by a three-fifths vote. Um, the community-based organizations of historically marginalized groups, um, meeting at some frequency. Um, adding critical incidents, which I think we need to do anyway, but, um, and then also the removal of section thirty-three, two oh three, number two E, um, for the qualification.
Let's take these one at a time. The two fifths vote one that, uh, to call a special meeting, two fifths from the council.
Three fifths.
Three.
Three fifths.
No, three fifths, sorry. A majority. Anyways, so, um, so we see four, five, people seem fine with that.
Yeah, the one would be that, um, historically marginalized, community-based organizations reporting at certain frequencies to the chief's oversight board.
They may have feedback for the frequency. Uh, Councilmember Bregel.
She just have a question about that, like, I'm curious, so are you talking about like organizations, or are you talking about individuals? Are you talking about perhaps, um, you know, Black Humboldt coming and speaking to the committee, or NAACP, or the tribe, or is that kind of what you're getting at there? Yes, yes?
Yes, I think, um, I think even a looser organization could be appropriate, depending on the situation, but definitely groups that are organized to uh protect and promote the, the rights of marginalized people.
Okay, and would that be around a certain issue that perhaps they would be discussing, or would this just be like a monthly presentation-type situation?
My concern is creating reforms, adding the, while including the voices of marginalized people. So I don't know what the complaints of the houseless population or people of color or folks in the tribe, I don't know what those complaints are, and until the until we hear them, we, none of us do. So, um, that would be, the principle that I'm going for is actively seeking input from the voices of marginalized people, whether that's organized groups or individuals. Um, but, um, I mean, if the NAACP wanted to come and speak on tribal land rights, I don't know that that would be a problem, except that it's not an EPD thing. But, um, whatever they see as the issue that they need to bring forward, I think would be the issue that just needs to be heard by the COB.
Okay, that's much clearer. And I'm wondering, would you do that by monthly, or do you think are there enough organi, there probably are enough organizations to do a small portion each month.
I imagine there are, but I defer to staff on what is reasonable for a, a timeline, as long as there is a timeline.
I would suggest that, as somebody who's tried to plan things monthly for filling up programs, that that could get, it starts off really easy, and then pretty quickly you're like, oh, now we're going back to the same, same groups of people, so.
And we still have the opportunity to call meetings, you know, if there is a specific issue, if there is a problem, an emergency session can be called. But just, you know, regular, I think quarterly, I would just throw out quarterly as a, because they're required to meet quarterly, maybe they're required to receive a presentation at each of their required meetings.
I think that's reasonable, and I did see the chief jump for joy when you said quarterly.
Which is not monthly, yes.
No, if I could just, real quick, if that's okay, I, I agree in that, um, I, I would assume that the oversight board, or I think someone said, uh, uh, called it an accountability board. I kind of like that, too. Um, but I, I, they set their own agenda, don't they? In there, and so you want the statement of intent that, uh, Councilmember Molton expressed could be written in there, right, where this is something that council expects of this board, and, uh, you know, at a minimum quarterly, or, you know, whatever, but nothing says they can't set an agenda item to have a guest presentation or something. I mean, those community connections are great. I want to hear from them. I want to understand, I want to learn and gain perspective.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Um, I was gonna suggest that- Um, I was gonna suggest that, I mean, I, I love this idea of the quarterly meeting also featuring a guest group to give perspective. And also that that could be part of the scope of the um, independent police auditor, that they are expected to be um, talking to community groups about their experiences with policing. Um, that seems completely appropriate for the scope of that role too. Um, and I also really love the name Community Accountability Board because the term oversight does make it sound like th- there's one interpretation of that word, like, oh, it's, it was an oversight. I don't know, you know?
Hey, and then we don't have to change the acronym, right, Steve?
True.
Watson?
The CAB, yeah. Um, I, so anyway, just, uh, I, I actually really like that change and I think it describes better what um, the, the group would be aiming to accomplish. Um, so I'm, I'm pleased to hear the chief liked it.
And as far as, as far as the IPA is concerned, I think that's definitely, we can, maybe not regular meetings, but just they need to put time aside to receive calls, input from those community-based organizations.
Member Moulton.
I'm amenable to that change, although I love that oversight is a tautology. It means the same thing.
So why don't we just ask that now? Who is okay with Community Accountability Boards? Uh, it looks like we've got uh, we get to keep our acronym. Councilmember Castellano.
Um, in terms of the um, the item E on qualifications, or are we quite there yet? Um, oh, also just in terms of the auditor, I, I do feel like it will just be important to communicate this as a resource for cu-, for community organizations in general. But, you know, that's kind of an aside to like forming the thing, but just, you know, making sure that, that once we do form it, we communicate that it's available, you know, to, to groups in our community.
And that, and that goes back to what Chief Watson would discuss, that they would have the ability to have these discussions and potentially take complaints to be forwarded to the department.
So, but
But let's get back to section E. Interest in pulling that and removing section E.
That makes me think
It's section three-three, two oh three, number two E.
Um, okay, go ahead, Leslie.
Sorry, I would say maybe like within the last, the past three or five years. Um, just because I, I think that I could imagine a potential conflict of interest if someone is like working for, as a representative for EC OA and then, or sorry, yeah. You know, the, the Police Officers Union and then EPOA, sorry, and then um, onto the board, I don't know, I, I ju-, I guess I just think that maybe having some space there where there's some breathing room between those two roles could be valuable.
Councilmember Moulton.
My intention from the beginning, um, and my preference would be that the Citizen Accountability Board is made of citizens than not former or current police officers of any stripe.
Steve?
All right, I, I actually get that, um, but someone else had mentioned earlier, perhaps the value of the insight that can of someone that can provide context is the CAB is looking at some very weighty issues. They've never been police officers. Um, so this, for instance, reviewing a use of force, radically different lens if you, you've been trained and involved in use of force versus someone that never has. So might I suggest that maybe it's something, no more than one of the seven members can be a former law enforcement related, and then you still get the value of the insight, but that's only one person. You have six other people that aren't affiliated with that to weigh in. It's just an idea. And again, council chooses ultimately who gets to be on that board and who, who does not. I'd hate to see you lose maybe somebody that can contribute.
Thank you. That does address my concern, which would be a board that over the course of years slowly managed to become all ex-police officers and would sort of remove the entire point of it. But having one, uh, one voice or a limited number of voices on there would be, I think, valuable, like you say.
Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, Chief Watson beat me to it. I was gonna suggest that maybe, yeah, not more than one. If I, I gotta say, if I was on an advisory board and I didn't understand use of force and you saw body cam, you know, where an officer was using force because they had to, because, you know, a guy was reaching for his gun or something. Your immediate reaction is something extreme, you know, this, this should never happen. Whereas in a situation where it's life or death, things get crazy. So I think having that perspective, maybe it's not somebody from City of Eureka, if that makes people more comfortable too. Maybe, you know, a retired officer from another city, another county, whatever. But I do think that perspective to understand, you know, what the limitations are for use of force and critical incident, all that is a, is a good thing to have. If you keep it to one, they can't dominate, you know, the vote. That's it.
So who feels like one is, Councilmember Bregel, you want to add to this part of the discussion?
Just one more thing, I, as I'm reading through this again, I'm not seeing anything about family members. So for instance, if someone, someone's wife wants to be on the board, I mean, I don't see anything listed here, any clarification that that's not something that's going to
I believe there is a reference to family members as defined by the city's nepotism policy.
Oh, okay. Where is that? I don't see it.
I think it's in the existing language, and if it for some reason was struck out, we can certainly reinsert it, but that was the intent.
Great, thanks.
Okay, given that, do, how do we feel about no more than one former law enforcement official? Okay, so that's what, I think that's what we're looking at, Miles, if you're taking notes, no more than one.
I got you.
Okay. Next item.
Still the question of removing E or not?
Okay, that was it. Are we going to remove what was, okay.
E, it, I think we just came to the determination of keeping E in there, but only limiting it to one person. So basically saying that we can have only one former employee official or representative of an employee association representing sworn officers.
Or a sworn officer.
Yeah.
So add that so it's no longer confusing and then limit it to one.
Yeah, you can't be a former EPD sworn employee and then E says, or a current or former employee official or representative of an employee association representing sworn police officers. We would change that to say only one of the board members can be a current or former employee official or representative of an employee association representing sworn police officers.
Or a sworn officer, former sworn officer.
That's, that's already, well, it says former CE PD sworn officer. So you want to say that a former sworn officer cannot? See, I thought the decision was that there would be, there could be one.
I think the language is a little um, confusing and basically what you're getting at is that you, because if you could be member of um, an assoc-, uh, a union, a, a law enforcement union, or you could be like um, someone who was a former captain and not a member of an employees' union. So if we just make it former law enforcement officer, one former law enforcement officer, I think that captures it. Is that correct?
I think that makes it
Okay.
a lot clearer for people.
Okay.
All right, was there anything else that we haven't addressed? Did all of your questions get answered? Cause City Manager Slattery?
Yes.
Okay. There anything, Council, uh, Councilmember Watson, Chief Watson?
Wow, I've been like, I'm a captain, I'm a council member, I'm a chief, I'm a big guy, I don't have any time.
Miles was, or the city attorney was the city manager, so.
And to address Councilmember Bregels, there is a section number five under that same section. Members of the board must not be an immediate family member of a current city police employee as defined by the city's nepotism policy. So that is in it.
Thank you, I just saw it.
Okay, Chief.
I, I just, I don't know if this is something that we would address when this comes back to you or at least put it out here now out of respect. Um, council just uh, approved um, the current members of the CAB. Um, and from my perspective, there's some fantastic people on there. I would personally prefer to uh, have them remain, those that choose to for their normal terms. And then you replace them as you go forward, or at least that should, that'll be, that's one of the questions that's out there right now. What are we gonna do with the current members that were recently um, chosen?
And they were all reappointed recently as we redid
I, I don't, from my perspective, there wasn't an intent to change that. Um, based on what was just decided here, if that goes forward, I don't think it would affect any of the current um, board members, correct, Chief Watson?
Uh, that would be correct. There's only one former law enforcement from an outside agency. And we just brought Dino and um, Raul in as new members as well. Um, Jason Meriwether is another recent addition, I think Donna is, and then some of the others have been around a little bit longer.
And I would say other than them just going through the background check with you, they need all the qualifications that are stipulated in the current, or the proposed amendment. So if council's okay with that.
Councilmember Moulton, Councilmember Araya.
Uh, do we feel like moving forward with the same people and the same acronym is going to uh, will the change that is necessary in their mission and their approach be possible if we have the same people going forward entirely?
Well, I think that the, the information as to what the finalized product is for the ordinance needs to be relayed to them and they'll need to follow that. Um, you know, the independent police auditor will be there. Um, they'll be looking at, you know, all of the complaints and not specific ones. Um, all of those things will still happen and they'll be required to follow the guidelines of whatever the adopted ordinance is. It may take some training from EPD staff as to what those guidelines are, but it will be by ordinance and they'll be required to do that.
Councilmember Araya.
But it, I'm not saying that, you know, it's up to council as to how they want to proceed.
Yeah, I personally would be happy to retain the um, recently appointed members. I think that, um, you know, my only concern would be if they have, if they don't support the direction of working with the independent police auditor and having this expanded scope, then I think we could allow them to step down and be replaced. So I would say let's make that offer. If anyone's like, this is not what I signed up for. I just signed up to meet with the chief and provide feedback in a little bit less structured of a, of a format or a little bit more of a, you know, conversation with the chief. I wasn't thinking that I was gonna sign up to help increase transparency in this specific way. Um, then sure, we could let them um, retire. So, um, I think that, that probably addresses it, but I imagine most of them um, are on board with this. Um, I know we have at least one person here in the audience. Um, i- if there's anyone who would like to speak to that, I, I'd love to hear.
From the CAB, I see Dino here. Uh, and Mark.
Alcardo.
So we'll go ahead and have Mark and then Dino after that.
Uh, thank you, council members. Yes, I would expect that the majority, if not all, the board will be supportive of the new direction. Uh, certainly the auditor, um, I think is going to be an important addition. You know, one of the things with the police accountability is looking for what best fit for the community is. And certainly I think uh, the city staff has done an excellent job looking at other examples, Pasadena, Santa Cruz, et cetera. And um, I think this is a important uh, direction to go. And as I said, I would anticipate that the vast majority, if not all, the board members would be in, in agreement with the new direction.
Thank you very much. And Dino?
Hi, everyone. Uh, yes, as a board member of this group, um, I do totally feel comfortable and I really enjoy seeing the direction of, of where this board is uh, going towards and the things that were discussed here tonight. Um, I, um, I feel like all of us provide such a unique perspective that is um, uh, unlike, uh, you know, the of what we're seeing. And I think, um, and again, I think we could, I think we're at a good place and we're slowly starting to move forward and, and making some good progress with this board. I, I think it would be uh, a step back if you decide to uh, pull people off this board. But I also like the idea that uh, Councilmember Araya said, uh, just giving people the option if they choose to step down, that they have that opportunity. Um, I know if it was up to me, I would just, would rather, would like to continue with, with this board.
And they do still have, I believe, um, term limits, so some of them will come up next year and then we can reassess at that time as well. And so how do we feel about um, moving forward with giving those an opportunity to step down if they're not uh, in line and then kind of watch in and assess as their terms come up about whether or not to continue? Looks like we've got agreement on that, Leslie, you good? Okay. So that's how we're gonna handle that. I think is that, are we pretty much wrapped up with this discussion, I think? Right on. That was item D two, or D one. Now we're uh, ready to move on to item D two, which is the COVID nineteen mandatory vaccination policy. Uh, so the City Manager Slattery is gonna start and then we're gonna turn it over to Director Folger.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor Seaman, and good evening again, mayor and council. Um, so this item here is related to mandatory vaccinations related to the COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, as council knows, you know, within our region here, Eureka has been at the forefront of trying to protect the community and our employees. Um, we were the first in the region to implement um, mandatory testing in mass once we started having um, more cases and seeing an increase with the Delta variant. Um, we've been very clear with our employees that this is likely the direction that um, we'd be going in when we made the announcement of what our current situation is, which is um, people that are unvaccinated need to have weekly tests and submit those weekly tests to personnel to make sure that um, they're not um, carrying the um, the virus. And so um, this is another way of protecting our, our workforce as well as the community. We're all um, considered essential employees and essential workers. We all interact with the public, so this is not only an attempt to um, keep our employees um, healthy and safe, but also the community as well. Um, HR Director Folger has done an outstanding job in working with our unions to have discussions and um, ultimately received um, support for this from both of our unions. Both ECEA and EPLA are on board um, with this and this recommendation. And um, we really appreciate their input and the back and forth and, and, and the input that they provided in getting us to this point. Um, so with that, you know, one of the things I do want to bring up is there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, the effects on our staffing levels and those type of things. A lot of it has been more of a negative connotation as if you do this, people are going to want to leave. Um, you know, personally, I believe that we could look at this as a positive and that we are being proactive in protecting our workforce and that people may seek out employment from an agency that is doing something so proactive. So um, with that, I want to leave it to, to human, I almost said human director, that's close. Human Resources Director Folger to discuss the policy and how it is, and it's gonna be implemented.
Uh, thank you, City Manager Slattery. Um, so the policy as written, as the city manager has pointed out, is this was definitely not developed in a vacuum. It was It was collectively decided upon with a lot of employee input and all of our, the management team behind this. And so with that, it's, it's not like we pulled it out of thin air either. This is in following expert guidelines from the state and federal public health officials and in sort of monitoring what is happening elsewhere. We took great care to sort of monitor the situation as much as we were able to before we felt confident in a final product as far as what the implementation steps and the actual policy would look like. So this policy essentially gives employees the, from the date of adoption, so it would be today 15 days to either prove that they have been vaccinated, begin the first shot of a vaccination series, or request an exemption. And then it would be eight weeks from the adoption of the policy that they would have to have completed their vaccination series, prove that, provide proof of completion of that vaccination series. If someone is approved for their exemption, we will work with them on the next steps there. If their exemption request is denied, the same timeframe sort of start over. So in total, it's eight weeks, but the initial compliance period is 15 days to either, to prove that they have had the first shot of a vaccination series. As you know, there are one-shot vaccinations with Johnson and Johnson. So presumably if somebody were to get that, they would comply with them, you know, with just having received that one shot. So we've all, this is not a decision that was made lightly. And we feel that it's really necessary and crucial in order to continue these critical public services that we provide and infrastructure are maintained at all times. As the city manager pointed out, we are essential workers in this regard. And utmost, if not all of our city workers are required, at least at some point, as part of their normal and customary functions to work in close proximity with one another or the public in order to deliver those services. Vaccinations have proven to be the most effective method of preventing people from getting and spreading the virus and from, or from getting seriously ill, hospitalized or dying if they do contract COVID-19. And the vaccines have also proven to be effective in reducing the impacts of the Delta variant, which is where we saw our most recent spike and the most heavy impact on our local healthcare facilities. So a mandate of this kind will help ensure the continuity of these vital public services during this evolving emergency situation and may help in reducing impacts to the workforce in the event that new variants do arise. The vaccination mandates elsewhere in the state and county have proven to be the most effective policy for increasing vaccination rates among staff. The vast majority of our employees currently now are vaccinated, are fully vaccinated. And the hope is that with the adoption of this policy, that those employees of ours who are currently unvaccinated, who are otherwise able to receive the vaccination, will choose to do so. And with that, I would like to open myself up for questions.
All right, Councilmember Bauer.
So Will, maybe, I don't know if you can, if you have a rough idea of what percentage of employees are fully vaccinated? Yeah, that's my first question.
Overall, we have a little over 70% of our workforce is currently vaccinated.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
In fact, it's getting, each day it changes. And it's getting, last time I checked, it's not just a little over 70%. In fact, it's getting closer to 80.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Castellano.
I'm sure you realize that we've been receiving, you know, some, some public comment about this, this issue. And I noticed that you have, you know, kind of two ways that people who have either, you know, pre-existing conditions or medical concerns or disabilities that makes vaccines inadvisable, could, you know, kind of sign a form and have doctors sign a form. And then you also have one based on religious exception request form. Basically it states, based on my sincerely held religious belief, practice, or observance, I'm requesting an exception to the vaccination requirement. Could you say a little bit more about how that's determined?
That's gonna have to be dealt with, and I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be able to go into a ton of detail. That's gonna have to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis, based on what people are sharing with us. Now, it has to be a bona fide religious reason or sincerely held belief. There is legal, you know, processes to go through to determine that. But really, these are individuals who there, who do have sincerely held beliefs. Our intent is to hear about that. Our intent is to avail them of their, their right to an exemption in the event that we can approve it. Same thing with the medical situation. We do, it's called an accommodation that they're, they're seeking. And this is a process that's really familiar to our office, but mostly in regard to medical accommodations in order to perform their job. And same, same standards apply. And it's to approach each situation on its own merits and address each request on a case-by-case basis. And there's a lot of factors that go into determining whether or not it's reasonable for the city to accommodate that request.
Councilmember Moulton.
So if someone asks for an exemption, whether it's medical or religious, and then they, so they're now unvaccinated, they come back to work, what then? Do they continue masking and testing? Or are those policies going to go by the wayside when this is put in place? How does that work?
There, there will be a continuation of our current masking and testing requirement for individuals who are unvaccinated or are unable to receive the vaccine. And if there's any adjustment to that in the, in the future, we would need to, again, speak with our, our employee groups and ensure that everyone is kind of understanding of what's happening. But the intent now is to just continue with what we're doing, provided that it continues to keep everyone safe.
Councilmember Brighel.
I'm sorry, so just to clarify, if somebody is exempt, then they will, they will have to mask. Will the whole office have to mask still and maintain the policies that are, that are going on now? Or will it just be the people that are unable to be vaccinated?
That's a good question, and it kind of has to do with what our current local public health mandates require of us. Currently, all city workers must mask indoors and when they're unable to keep six feet of distance when they're working together outdoors. We would have to assess what those impacts would be if the, if that mandate were to change. And right now, I'm just not prepared to answer that question in detail, but this is kind of what we've been having to deal with over the last year and a half is these changing, like these evolving regulations and how we're best prepared to address them when they come down. That's part of how we hope that this mandate will help us, you know, be able to address those changes more uniformly, more easily, and, and keep people safe.
All right, any other questions? See, we have quite a line of people who wanna make comments, so. And they've been very patient, it's been a long meeting, and we'll start with Ash. Are you there? There you are.
Hello, my name is Ash. Today I will be discussing relations between how COVID-19 was handled in our county and the impact of the vaccine mandates that are under consideration this month. First off, I feel compelled to state that I have been personally impacted by health conditions following full vaccination of a family member. After receiving two shots with the Moderna treatment, my grandma came down with shingles and now is dying from congestive heart failure. This adverse reaction is consistent with the video evidence presented by US Department of Health and Human Services whistleblower Jody O'Malley RN. In the video evidence, Dr. Maria Gonzalez, while talking about a patient's condition, stated it was myocarditis due to the vaccine. When asked to clarify what case Dr. Gonzalez was referring to, Jody O'Malley stated that it was a 30-something-year-old patient suffering from congestive heart failure. Jody O'Malley also stated this patient's case was not reported as being linked or in any way associated with having taken one of the COVID-19 treatments being called a vaccine. This was also the case with my grandma in Siskiyou County. Situations like this demonstrate that taking any one of the COVID-19 treatments being called a vaccine involve risk. Where there is risk, there must be choice. People must be allowed the natural born freedom to make this choice guaranteed by our constitutional rights. This widespread CDC protocol is being followed in a similar fashion within our county, where health conditions that arise after taking the COVID-19 treatments being called vaccinations are deemed as non-related. This is the exact opposite of how deaths have been assessed locally and across the country, with any comorbidities being listed as secondary, with any case yielding symptoms or a positive COVID-19 PCR test result. Health Officer Dr. Ian Hoffman has openly admitted through email correspondence that the county health department is receiving state, federal, and third-party funding in return for promoting these vaccines as necessary, safe, and effective. This is a clear conflict of interest prioritizing acquisition of healthcare funding in a separate and distinct category apart from the health and well-being of the citizens of this county. Using force or coercion to push this agenda is unacceptable and will ultimately be met.
Yeah. So, another-
All right. Are you, are you still there?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
An additional conflict of interest just came out in Australia. I don't know if you've heard about this, but the Prime Minister of New South Wales resigned recently after being caught by a watchdog group for accepting millions of dollars from Pfizer to push vaccines. And then also another whistleblower just came forth with, from Medicare, showing that 48,600, or 465 deaths have occurred within 14 days of COVID-19 vaccination. And this is just within the Medicare system. So I think-
That's been three minutes.
This county needs a second opinion.
Thank you very much. And we are gonna move on to Catherine.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you though. A little bit, maybe you're kind of cutting out, I'm sorry.
That's okay, can you hear me now?
Now I can, yes.
So, my name's Catherine Gabitan, and I'm a Filipino-American. I identify as a person of color. And I'd like to speak on the fact that requiring Humboldt citizens to provide proof of vaccination against COVID-19 to keep their jobs or to patronize a business would disproportionately affect people of color and other marginalized populations in Humboldt. The news has already reported that the populations affected the worst by COVID-19 are non-white. And thankfully, many of those people have recovered with natural immunity. And as shown in the table on the humboldgov.org COVID-19 dashboard, the majority of the citizens that vaccine mandates in Humboldt County would affect would be people of color, especially indigenous and native populations. And almost 60% of people like myself who identify as mixed- I live in Humboldt because I pride myself on inclusivity. And if vaccine mandates are allowed in Humboldt, we're ushering in an era of medical segregation and racial segregation, because the majority of our Asian and indigenous community members will literally be left out. Preventing these already marginalized groups who have likely recovered and have immunity from being able to work and provide a living for our families is eugenic in nature. And it will set the precedent to bar us from going into restaurants, theaters, public transportation, and indoor public spaces, which goes directly against the inclusive nature of our community. So marginalized groups have an increased distrust of the government and pharmaceutical companies because of our nation's history. A prime example includes the Tuskegee experiment where the United States Public Health Service and the CDC injected syphilis into 400 African-Americans without their consent. So, just to see what would happen to them. That was still happening less than 50 years ago. And your inability to address how to support our immune systems naturally or that natural immunity is not being considered as an alternative to the vaccine makes marginalized communities trust you even less. So last year during the George Floyd protests, we united to uplift black voices. Don't be the type of stereotype white Americans that only promote inclusivity when it's convenient for you. Black Lives Matter has already made a formal statement that vaccine mandates are racist. Let that sink in. And I suggest that you guys actually work on banning all mandates related to COVID-19 vaccinations and set a precedent in our state and show some true leadership.
Thank you very much. And now we're gonna move on to Adam Lustig. Oh, you're muted if you're trying to talk.
Wrong button, okay. So I'm Adam Lustig, I live here in Eureka. And, you know, I'm old enough to remember back in July when President Biden told us that if we got the shot, we wouldn't get COVID. And we could take our masks off. And, you know, now here we are three months later and breakthrough cases are happening all the time. And, you know, now CDC Director Walensky said this week that the vaccines do not prevent transmission, which really kind of kills the argument for a mandate, this concept that you're somehow protecting someone other than yourself when people with the vaccine can just as easily get COVID and transfer COVID. And if, and since it reduces symptoms, actually, it's more common that you could have low symptoms, not know you have it, and be spreading it if you're vaccinated. So, you know, I heard the whole opening pitch about why we're doing this and it just doesn't make sense with the science whatsoever. And, you know, Senator Ron Johnson just recently gave a presentation to Congress showing that 70% of recent deaths in the UK were people that were vaccinated. So, you know, the, and also, you know, the Delta variant, you can look at Israel and see that the vaccines, and even Pfizer has admitted this recently too, that they're not working very good with the Delta variant. And Dr. Hoffman just said in the last meeting he was in, that Delta has taken over, that's the predominant variant. So all these arguments I heard in the beginning from you about why you should be doing this, they've all been thrown out the window with all the recent science. And being that the science just continuously keeps changing, I don't see what the big rush is. You got 70% of the people vaccinated. And my other question is, since, you know, it's our money on the line here, if you coerce your, your employees to get the vaccine and they're injured by the vaccine, is the city then liable? Which means, are the citizens of the city liable? Because it's gonna be our money that's gonna have to pay those claims. So, you know, I'd love to hear from the county or the city attorney to make sure that, you know, this, this coercion isn't putting us all in a bad situation. You know, medical freedom is a human right. And you're gonna make this medical freedom mandatory? And then Fauci already said the booster shots are gonna be coming? Like, where's this gonna end? This is a slippery slope we're going down here, and we shouldn't be violating people's freedoms. And this is just a very bad idea. And I really hope that you'll, you know, take a step back, slow down, and reconsider what you're about to do here. That's all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Creekmore, Donnie Creekmore. Yes, it is, I could hear you.
Oh, excellent, excellent, okay, great. Yeah, I just wanted to basically second the, the comments that are made by the people before me and also say that, you know, with the fact that humboldgov.org, you go on their COVID dashboard, it literally shows that anybody underneath the age of 59 years old has a 0% chance of death and less than a 5% chance of hospitalization. Those numbers are built on cases that the state collects. Those case collections are, do not include PCR tests that are taken at home, people that never got a test and just stayed homesick, and, you know, or people that are barely symptomatic and had the sniffles and- and had the sniffles and never really even thought that they were sick, and so they didn't get tested either. So, the amount of actual cases that the, that the state is basing percentages on is likely two times the amount, the cases that you actually see. Meanwhile, we're using these cases as if they are the justification for ongoing mandates and masks and vaccinating all of your employees and all of this forced coercion, when it's, it doesn't make any sense that you're using cases as the, as the predominant justification when the hospitalizations and the deaths would be divided in half if you had the entirety of cases as the basis for that math. Does that make sense to you? So, basically, if, if there's two times the amount of cases out there in the population, then the hospitalizations and the deaths can be cut in half. Since fifty-nine-year-olds, based upon your own data, have a zero percent chance of death, based upon your own data, humboldgov.org COVID nineteen dashboard, you can go. And recently too, they've, they've really mysteriously, really odd decision, they've decided to take the cleared cases off of the graph that basically trails right behind the PCR and confirmed cases, because, I mean, it's, it's the best graph you've ever seen in your life. You have the bottom line of hospitalizations and deaths literally trailing right under one percent. And then you have all these cases, and then all of them clearing with the yellow line that follows the cases, the confirmed cases, to show that they're all cleared. All of these people have recovered, have natural immunity now, there's literally no reason whatsoever for them to take a vaccine if they have natural immunity. All the science on, all the science, literally, anybody can Google right now, there's peer-reviewed science all over humboldfc.com that literally shows that peer-reviewed study after peer-reviewed study, that there's no science whatsoever backing the idea that vaccines are stronger than natural immunity. And it actually shows the opposite. You have two hundred and fifty days of robust immunity, you can't give it or give it to anybody else, and then you have natural immunity for a lifetime, you cannot die because it's in your bone marrow. This is all peer-reviewed studies, and I've actually submitted this to you guys previously in writing. Uh, I sent it to you around 1:00 PM today in an email. I'd really like a response, and I'd love for you all to put your eyes on this before you make this terrible decision that you're about to make. You're acting like tyrants. It's unbecoming of, of a board like this, and you all should be ashamed of yourselves.
Thank you, that's time. And next is Emma Baker.
Hello, everybody. Um, I vote no COVID vaccine mandate for city employees or anyone in our city. The vaccine, obviously, as we've heard, and if you look for yourselves, it has adversely affected many people, including causing myocarditis, stroke, blood clots, and hemorrhages, as well as other events, even death. According to the VAERS website, Vaccine Adverse Events Reporting System, which I've looked at myself, and also people I know personally have told me stories of their adverse reactions. Not to mention there are many other sources that say the same thing, but it's too many to mention here. People in our community have unique, personal, and therefore valid reasons for not taking this vaccination, and they deserve your respect. Now, if you are afraid, which I understand, people have been afraid of COVID, please be reassured that there are known treatments. They just aren't being widely used in our area, and my doctor as well is not using them yet. But many other doctors are using these treatments successfully. And one example is if you research Dr. Pierre Corry. Um, an example of a treatment is ivermectin per humans, as many of us have heard, and I've heard, um, people that have used it and have success as well. Um, it's been used prophylactically to prevent COVID when taken weekly, and it should be considered as a resource for people who don't want the vaccine for each of their own personal and therefore, again, valid reasons. Nobody should lose their job because of your COVID response. I repeat, nobody should lose their job because of your COVID response. People's livelihoods are in your hands, which is a place where I never expected our jobs to be. Your hands, your hands can take away our paychecks, our hard-earned accomplishments in our work and our ability to provide for our families, our children. That is in your hands. Or, you can give the opportunity to continue as we were before the vaccine, working together to stay healthy through our own individual intelligent choices as free American citizens, free. We have each other's backs, we had each other's backs, being supportive to each other while continuing in our professions, as it should be. No one should lose their jobs because of what you decide about a medicine that we put in our bodies that has unknown long-term effects. And, as we know, has already harmed many people, including children. Please don't mandate the vaccine, I beg you, please. Give with your hands instead of taking away from the community you serve with those same hands, especially after our hands are the ones who voted for you. Please don't marginalize the unvaccinated. You don't have to intimidate, you don't-
Your three minutes are, have been completed.
You don't have to marginalize the un-
And Dion Arment?
Hello to you, Mayor and Eureka City Council members. As public officials, you have an opportunity and a duty to protect your constituents. And therefore, I want to bring to your attention an affidavit recently filed by US Army Lieutenant Colonel Teresa Long, MD, who is so concerned about the common and severe side effect of myocarditis and related permanent heart damage and mortality from the mRNA COVID nineteen vaccines on the Army Air Corps personnel under her supervision. But she concludes her affidavit by recommending the grounding of all flight personnel if they have been injected with a COVID nineteen vaccine. Here are a couple of points from the affidavit for you to consider. mRNA vaccines produced by Pfizer and Moderna both have been linked to myocarditis. We additionally now know that vaccination does not necessarily prevent infection or transmission of SARS-CoV-two. Research shows that most individuals with myocarditis do not have any symptoms. Complications of myocarditis include dilated cardiomyopathy, arrhythmias, and sudden cardiac death, and carries a mortality rate of twenty percent at one year and fifty percent at five years. This is according to the National Center for Biotechnology Information, US National Library of Medicine. And she quotes, despite optimal medical management, overall mortality has not changed from myocarditis in the last thirty years. I want to bring this to your attention because right now, you can choose not to mandate a vaccine that not only does not necessarily prevent infection, but it also carries a significant risk of permanent debilitating heart damage. We need to protect our citizens rather than force them to take a risky vaccine. If Eureka City workers choose to take that risk, then they are responsible for their choice. However, the city of Eureka has an opportunity to avoid mandating a vaccine that is still being evaluated and to protect people from the risks that are emerging with these still experimental EUA vaccines. We should not be mandating injections of healthy people who might be harmed by these injections. In light of these risks, the city council should also consider the possibility of liability for harm due to any mandated administration of EUA vaccines and the fiscal impacts to the city of Eureka of that liability. The FDA approval is only for a branded form of the Pfizer vaccine that is not currently available to employees of the city of Eureka. Only the EUA Pfizer product is available to city workers, and the manufacturers are protected from liability by the provisions of the EUA status of the vaccines. But I remind you that the city of Eureka has no such protections. I'd like to hear from city council if you've considered the risk of myocarditis and death, and from Bob Black regarding city of Eureka liability for harm from a COVID nineteen vaccine mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pardo?
Uh, thank you, council members. Um, initially, I was just anticipating listening, uh, to the police advisory, uh, portion of the, of the meeting, but I did stay on for this portion. And, and first off, I want to say, I think, and we were very fortunate in our lifetimes, the vast majority of us, to grow up in a time when we didn't really need vaccines. Um, we could sort of choose if we wanted to have tetanus or not, maybe our kids needed measles, maybe they didn't, but that's changed. COVID is a game changer. No longer can we make a decision to not have a vaccine or have it, we absolutely need the vaccine. The vaccine is the only way where we can protect ourselves, our friends, our families, our community from a disease that has a very high death rate and also has a high disability rate as well. Um, first off, vaccines have been very safe and effective for many, many years, and the COVID vaccine has been shown to be very safe and effective. As with any vaccine, there's a very small risk of severe side effects. Uh, and the COVID vaccine, you know, is the same way. There is a small risk of severe side effects, but the risk is very, very small compared to the vast benefit it provides the vaccinated, uh, person. I think we've all heard tragic stories here locally. There was the Lost Coast outpost two, three months ago, the poor fellow who survived losing a lung to cancer. He had got himself fully vaccinated, but unfortunately, he caught COVID. You know, that's on us as a community, not taking all the precautions, not getting vaccinated. And I've just had recently a classmate I heard was in a hospital, very, very sick, not being vaccinated. Um, and, you know, I think we really have to look into ourselves and say, we all need to step up, we need to do what's best for our community. One thing people don't realize, and I, as a physician, realize, is we have a huge number of immunosuppressed, disabled elderly patients. Those patients, even when they're vaccinated, are still high-risk for COVID. And so, we need to do our part to help those in our community who are less fortunate, who have more problems and get vaccinated. So, I understand there's a lot of concerns, there's a lot of, um, um, you know, people out there are very afraid, but the reality is, the vaccine's very safe, it's critical for our community, and we have to remember, there's a lot of people out there who really need us to help protect them. And so, I hope as a community, we continue to do as much as we can for those people. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much. Lorraine?
Okay, I think I'm on air.
You are, you are on, I could hear you.
Okay. Um, oh my goodness, I have been watching, reading, researching everything on COVID from the day one, and I am a strong believer that we as individuals on this planet in America, in Humboldt County, you know, have the right to choose and to tell us that we have to be forced into getting a vaccination to help others because of their immune system is, is just not actually correct. You know, we all are living and breathing on this planet in the way that we are, and we have to have our own choices. And everything that I have researched about this vaccination is that there are so many ways, many, many ways of combating the very beginning of having COVID. And all of our papers, for example, the Journal, everything that the Journal is writing right now is all about being vaccinated. They don't have any, any way to express anybody's opinion about, you know, the, against being vaccinated. What I see with this and with the media, because the media is a strong player, and this is, it comes down to fear. So, we're putting, and we're pushing fear. Fear is the number-one denominator of people getting vaccinated is that it's a life-or-death situation, and I don't believe that's true. I believe there's so many other ways that we can combat COVID with various, um, you know, like situations that are good for our body, that's not bad for our body, and we're not looking at that. We're just pushing a vaccination, but there's ways that we can combat this, this, um, COVID, this, this virus before it gets into our system, deep down into our system, and we're not looking at that. And I hear things about ivermectin, and, you know, the, the Journal is pushing, the only narrative is about it's a horse medication. And I'm like, oh my God, you know, in nineteen seventy-five, it was approved by the, by the government saying that it is a very safe drug for not only scabies, but parasites and viruses. And it's been proven that it, it totally works on, um, on what we're going through right now. And I don't know why we're not using all of the protocols. We get-
Thank you, Lorraine, your three minutes is up.
Yeah, well, let's use vitamin D as well, it's really proven. I used it, and my daughter had COVID, and I had high levels of vitamin D, C, E, zinc, everything.
Thanks. Um, and now we're gonna go to Matt's Galaxy.
All right. I was kinda hesitant in getting on this tonight, but I'm sitting here watching this, and I feel compelled to, to speak to you, and I appreciate your time. Um, Ms. Moulton, I understand, I'm watching this right now, and, you know, I see your facial expressions and your, you know, you're very, uh, you know, spoken with your body movement, you know? Just like you have feelings about how you feel, the people that are choosing not to get vaccinated also have strong feelings about it. You can roll your eyes and, and disagree, and, but, when you look at it, like, I come from a situation where, um, you know, I've personally been affected with vaccine injury. My daughter, who's very young, has autoimmune encephalitis, and, you know, we've been down to Stanford, I don't know how many times now, and they agree that this could be a vaccine-related injury. So, I take this very serious, you know, so much as so, like, during this entire pandemic, I haven't been in a grocery store since, for like twenty months now. Um, I've taken precautionary measures to keep my family safe, but I'm also in fear of this as it's so new, and it's scary. And, you know, possibly losing your job over the fear that you have, or, you know, the reality that you live in, is, it's crazy to me. Um, we all have, um, beliefs, and no belief is really different than the other, no one, you know, unvalidates one another. Um, it's just, it's sad to see we're at the situation we're at right now, and I'm not against, you know, people choosing to get vaccinated, um, you know, I'm not per se an anti-vaxer, um, but I'm also very cautious with everything. Not to mention, if I were to be vaccinated, and let's say I do contract it and I come home, who, my daughter cannot be vaccinated, she now runs the risk of me infecting her, I'd rather it just be me than give it to her. So, I just want you guys to realize that we're not all crazy, this isn't, this isn't, you know, it's not crazy talk, we all, yeah, that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Matt. Judy?
Good evening. I wasn't planning on talking, but I think that what you're doing is a good idea. I think it benefits the health of the city overall, and I think it will protect employers and employees alike. Um, the employees of the city don't have control over who they have to meet on a daily basis, and having them protected and to be able to do their jobs is probably the best thing that you can do to ensure that your city and the people that you represent all stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Dino Novello?
I, I also wasn't gonna speak, but I decided to speak anyways, but, um, but I also wanted to show my support of, of this. Um, I think you're, I think if this goes through, we're still giving people the op, the opportunity to, uh, to, to get an exemption from this, and, and I think that's pretty fair. Um, and I just think it's, what's, what's not fair is, um, is this thing dragging on already for twenty months? And if everything shows that this, if this goes, if, if you approve this, that this will help motivate a few people to, to get vaccinated, I think that's gonna do the whole community, uh, uh, a great, is, is gonna cause, is gonna do everybody good. Um, I know personally, uh, I know I've, I've, it's been difficult for me- Um, I know personally, uh, I know I've, I've, it's been difficult for me to get into a medical facility. Um, because this thing has been dragging on too long. And so I think as more people get vaccinated, um, this is gonna definitely help um, decrease the hospital, the hospital rates and it's gonna help decrease um, the, the transmission. So, uh, I've vote, uh, I suggest that you, uh, in favor of, of passing this.
Thank you very much. And that looks like our last public comment on this item. And before I turn it back to council, um, I would just, oops, there we go. Before I turn it back to council, I really just wanna say that this is such an incredibly, um, personal, very, something people get very passionate about. And I've seen meetings all across the country that have not been nearly as respectful as this has. So no matter how the discussion goes, I really wanna say that I, um, value and appreciate those people who have taken the time to make a comment. I see we have two more. I'm gonna let these two more speak and then, um, I'll bring it back to council. Um, Kim, what?
What? That it's nine forty and it's me that we have to make an extension of the meeting.
So I. Thank you for noticing that. I did notice that at nine and then was just listening and forgot. Thank you.
So I move we extend the meeting till ten thirty.
One second.
Thank you. Um, can we get a vote on that, please?
If you all just wanna raise your hand, I can ex, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Kim. I was just, uh, didn't, lost track of time. So we're gonna hear from Jocelyn and Brittany and then we'll bring it back to council. Jocelyn.
Okay, yeah, I'm wondering, um, why there's no mention of, uh, proof of antibodies? If you've already had COVID, why that can't be your, uh, your path to not get vaccinated? Um, and as well as will you have to mandate the booster as well? Because it's not FDA approved. It's still under EUA according to the FDA website. And do these vaccines even work? There's eight percent of the deaths in Humboldt County is from, uh, are from vaccinated people. And so, um, yeah, I'm just wondering, uh, how reliable are these city politicians with my medical, uh, health and future? And, uh, who's funding the vaccine? I think it's Bill Gates. I know he's all about eugenics and depopulation. And I'm just wondering if that's crossed your mind either. So thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Brittany C?
Hi, I'm just, thank you guys for having the public on, first of all, and for dealing with all of this. Um, I am just concerned that this is going to open the door to other things such as, you know, vaccine passports. And I'm just terrified that this is gonna really impact our community. I've seen so many businesses close in the past couple of years and I'm just really worried about, you know, the future of this, of this county. And I'm just not really buying that. It's about the safety, you know, because we still sell cigarettes and everything else. Blah, blah, I could go on, but, um, I just, I'm also curious about the liability as well as what Adam spoke about and a few other people because, you know, who's gonna be liable for this? I mean, we're already having problems with, um, some other county issues as far as, um, some of the cannabis stuff, you know, and Pat McTigge and what happened with that whole ordeal. And I mean, somebody's gotta pay for things that have happened. And, um, I just don't want our community to suffer. So I think it should be a personal choice. I won't hold you guys up anymore. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, I will bring it back to council now for, uh, discussion. Councilmember Moulton.
Um, I'll wait for a minute, but I just wanted to apologize right off the bat for my overly exasperated facial expression. I am absolutely listening. I do not, um, disregard anything that anybody in the public said. Except some things that are just straight up misinformation or complete misunderstandings of some scientific method. So I will address that, but I'm sorry if I made anybody feel like I wasn't listening to them. Definitely listening, that's why we're here.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments or wanna open up this discussion? Councilmember Bauer and then Councilmember Braggel.
Uh, I have lots to say. Um, I, I don't know really where to begin other than I feel like we've lost trust in science and medicine. Um, when a doctor, you know, pleads with the community, um, you know, to, to, to get vaccinated and nobody believes it. Nobody believes medicine anymore. Um, you know, there was just so much was said that i- is kind of disappointing. Um, I understand the emotions behind things. But this is, you know, life and death, um, for a lot of people. Um, our hospitals are still overflowing. The ER is still overflowing with people. Um, so it, it impacts others, not just those that think it's a personal choice. It affects the community at large. So it's about caring for community and, um, trust in science. This isn't a nefarious thing dreamed up by a few individuals to get us all to take a jab. It's, 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 it's about community health, you know? Um, people say this is something new, therefore scary. But, you know, every vaccine at some point in time is get measles, you know, smallpox. But all those things we did because it was life and death and it was best for the community. So, um, it's, you know, I understand people's feelings, but I, I'm disappointed that medicine is no longer trusted, that professionals are no longer trusted. That we no longer believe in science. So, um, yeah, I, I'll, I'll leave it at that right now, but, you know, and there's just, there's a lot to talk about here. And, uh, you know, about, what, what was said about choices and freedom? Well, you know, ha, my, we should have the freedom to be safe. And this is a vaccine, you know, that is, is creates a safer place for the community, the health of your community. And, um, I'm just a little disheartened by it, but I'll, I'll let others speak. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Braggel, and I just want to let everybody know that a public comment time is over. So, um, Councilmember Braggel.
Well, I just, you know, several people that spoke today spoke about the liability and who's responsible for that. I was just wondering if we could get a clarification on that. I know that that's not a comment, but it was brought up several, several times.
And by liability, I mean, I heard the word a bunch, but it didn't really fit into the context as I understand it. Um, as it applies to the city and our liability. I mean, the city, um, requires vaccinations, physicals, TB tests and other medical procedures as a condition of employment for many of our physicians here with the city. This isn't something that's unusual, um, terribly, other than that, um, it's got so much attention. Um, the, uh, the liability, as I guess I understand it, would be what if, um, something were to happen to somebody who had, um, gotten, um, an adverse reaction to the, um, to the vaccine? Um, that is a question we would ha, again, we would have to address it based on the merits at the time. You know, this is, all this is very much handled on a case-by-case basis, medical conditions, all of, all these. That, you, it doesn't have a clear and concise answer as to like what our liability would be. Um, but, um, I, I think per- perhaps Pam, as our risk manager, might be able to add a little more clarification about how, um, the city or local agencies may be in, um, uh, um, immune from such liability for, um, requiring safety protocols to be followed and things like that. Or perhaps, um, our city attorney Black might be able to weigh in there.
I can tell you that I did reach out to Sira, uh, which is our JPA to seek some guidance um, from their perspective. Uh, and as, uh, Director Folder, Folder indicated, it's really a case-by-case basis. Um, if somebody were to have an adverse reaction to a vaccine that, um, they only took because of the city mandate, uh, we, they can submit a workers' comp claim and then we would, you know, pursue it from there. Uh, that's the, that's the guidance I received. Uh, whether or not the city would be, um, actually, you know, responsible for that workers' comp claim would be determined by our workers' comp carrier.
Yeah, I think Pam is correct on that. I think this, it's important to realize it would be a workers' comp claim and not some kind of massive liability, uh, and, you know, analysis. Um, I think we need to recognize that around the world, something on the order of five or six billion shots have been administered. Uh, and the proven adverse reactions are very few in number. So I don't, you know, I just don't know where that goes. Um, but it's always important to realize that li, it's ea, very easy to claim liability and there could be workers' comp claims, there could be lawsuits. That doesn't mean that they're gonna be successful. I think in general, the odds of success of those kind of claims is going to be very, very low.
Thank you for clarifying that. I may have comments later.
Any other discussion or motion or Councilmember Arroyo?
I'd like to move that we adopt policy three point three one, tac COVID nineteen mandatory vaccination, requiring all city personnel to be fully vaccinated. Um, including the provisions given in the staff report for, um, exemption options.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion on this item? Councilmember Braggel?
So against it. Oh my God, I can't believe you guys are going.
Please, thank you for muting, Pam. Um, Councilmember Braggel?
So, yeah, I just wanted to say that I really, I do appreciate everybody's commenting and I, and I, and I do hear you. And this is a very, um, for me, this is a very difficult decision. It's, it's, um, but when looking at both sides of the situation, I think it's really important to look at the community as a whole. Um, this isn't about individual people anymore. This is about a community as a whole working together. Um, you know, and I heard a comment of someone saying that fifty-nine year olds don't die, something to that effect. And I have to tell you that four people that I know have died from COVID and they were younger than fifty-nine. So I feel a level of frustration with that kind of banter. Um, and I would hope that you would look into your statistics a little further. You can contact me if you wanna talk later. I'm happy to do that.
They're from your website.
Worth this. Um, I think that as a community, uh, you know, this isn't a, this is a community issue. This is not an individual issue. And, um, yeah, I just wanted to be very clear about that. And I think that there is an opportunity for people that do have situations with their children or what have you to fill out that exemption and be, um, be taken care of.
I think this is an individual.
And we need, yeah, can you just like mute? Yeah, it's hard to mute everybody, but thank you, Pam.
This is an individual issue.
People will not be able to walk down the street if you.
All right.
Mayor Seaman has been muted.
I, Mayor Seaman was muted. Um, so we have a motion, we have a second, we had some discussion. Do we want further discussion? Uh, Councilmember Moulton?
I disagree. I am disagreeing.
Disagree on.
I disagree on this vote. I'm sorry. You guys are not in the right.
So the time for the public comment is over.
Public comment is over.
No, but this is a public thing. It's not just.
Recalls are coming.
You can boo me, but I'm sorry, this is not right. You.
You getting them all?
With your permission, I can put people back into a waiting room if they refuse to mute. Okay, with their, your permission.
Process for recall is available on the city website, or you can write any one of us and we will send it to you. I had to get a measles vaccination to go to public school. I had to get a meningitis vaccination and test to get federal money to go to college. I had to get a tuberculosis test and vaccination to work in a school. I've had to get a vaccination for mo, or, or some kind of health test for pretty much every job I've ever had. There are already vaccine mandates. If you want to leave this country and go in any direction that isn't Mexico or Canada, somebody's going to ask you if you've had a particular vaccination.
Doesn't make it right.
Very commonplace. I don't know, I can't argue this. Um, the Delta variant exists because the COVID, the COVID virus spread around unvaccinated populations, people who didn't have the vaccine available to them. It spread around those populations and mutation built upon mutation, upon mutation, until we came up with the mutant.
It is real.
That our vaccines are less effective against. The longer we have, we do not achieve herd immunity, the more unvaccinated people we have, the higher risk we have of creating a variant that no vaccine will stop. And then we are talking about not death and injury, but the end of everything. We're talking about a, a virus that could kill absolutely everyone. If you disagree with science, you're not doing your own research. You are just wrong. Science is not a belief. It is not a truth. It is a system for finding truth and arguing against it. Walking around unvaccinated is big colonizer energy. Okay? It is hurting the least among us, including yourself. You cannot do research. You have not done research. You do not do clinical double-blind studies in your garage. If science learns better, it didn't lie to you in the first place. If science tells you something different, it didn't lie to you in the first place. It learned better. We learned better. We are learning better and we are listening to the science and we are going to do, or I'm going to do, what I think is right for our community, for myself, for my family and for the whole goddamn human race.
Have you done this research personally?
So we have a motion, we have a second, we have had some discussion. Do we have any further discussion or are we ready to vote?
Uh, Mayor Seaman, I just want you to know that those, um, who have repeatedly like unmuted themselves and spoke, some have been put into the waiting room and I can remove them completely from the meeting. Um, if, if we need to, I just wanna put that out there because it, it's really hard to keep up with uh, trying to mute everyone, uh, when they repeatedly violate.
Incredibly difficult. So thank you for doing that juggling. And I, um, I regret saying how respectful everybody was, dang it. I had such high hopes and I, now I'm disappointed. Um, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion and I don't think we'll have any more interruptions. Would you like to call a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Costellano?
I, and I'll just say, I care for quite a few people who are immune compromised. And I do think this will potentially save people's lives. And I, I mean, I know it will save people's lives and some of those people I know.
Councilmember Moulton?
Hopefully no one else, yes. Hopefully no one else has to watch a family member die on Facebook.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer?
Aye.
Councilmember Bragel?
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Okay, everybody. Want everybody to take a deep breath. We are almost there. I know it's 10 o'clock. We said we were going to stop at 10. There is a quick item that I believe is time-sensitive.
I captured it at 10:30, I thought.
Oh, was it 10:30? Oh.
Yeah.
Right on. So we're going to move on. Everybody take a deep breath first. You all okay? All right. Now we're going to move on to item D3, voter ward redistricting and census data. And today, Riley is the winner of I have to wait through all the long discussions. So congratulations, you did it. And why don't you talk to us about voter ward redistricting and census data?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
All right. Am I sharing my screen?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Let me just get this thing fired up. Wrong screen. Is that better?
Now it looks plenty big.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be brief. We've been through a lot tonight. So I'm here to just provide a brief report and receive some council directions on our ward redistricting project, which is occurring as a result of the newly released 2020 census data. So here we have our current voter wards. And those voter wards were adjusted a few years back, and they were adjusted based on census blocks. So those are the 2010 census blocks, all uniquely colored. And if you look closely, you can see our ward boundaries follow the boundaries of the blocks. So now, just recently, we've been handed down the 2020 census blocks. And if you can notice subtly, if I toggle back and forth, there are subtle changes now. Certain boundaries of blocks have been changed and the populations have been adjusted from the new census data. So just zooming in to give you an example of what we're dealing with, this is our current ward system with the 2010 census blocks. And then you can see, if I go back and forth, this orange one is the 2020, the new stuff. Some of the census blocks have been merged together. Some have been separated into a finer mesh. But basically, we have instances like we see here where originally in the 2010 data, we were following a block data for a census block boundary that has now been merged together. So we don't, we have to adjust those boundaries to match the new census blocks. So what in essence will happen is something like that, where we adjust one way or the other. And we also have to look at the new populations and make sure that all of the ward, or all of the wards are plus or minus within 2% of the average or 2% of each other's population. So here's the zoomed-out view of the entire ward system for the 2010. And here's the zoomed out for the 2020. This is just one example that I went through and adjusted the wards so that the populations were equalized. So if I go back and forth, especially with like the third ward, you can see kind of it shakes its hips a little bit there in the middle. So that was just one example. This is just one example of a ward, you know, scenario. And so basically, we are looking for some, staff's looking for direction from you guys to determine if we want to put together a redistricting committee, or if we just want to have staff put together its best effort and go from there. And that's about all I have.
All right. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Castellano, then Arroyo?
Thank you, Riley, for this. If we just, if we go with staff's direction, the public will still be able to give input on it. We just won't have kind of a separate breakout committee that meets for some period of time.
Yeah, there's, there's different ways we can go about accepting public input. You know, the Lost Coast Outpost previously provided the public with some good methodologies to contribute. They have like, I think they call it the redistricting game, where you can go into a mapping application online and create your own version. So I think in fact, our previous, or our current ward system was based on one of their scenarios that the public created. So that does provide a good opportunity for public input.
And I would also add that any kind of ward realignment would come back to you in the form of an ordinance, and that would require the public comment on both the introduction and the adoption of the ordinance. And staff, the tact that Riley took was to make the minimal amount of adjustments to achieve equality amongst the wards by just moving or, you know, boundaries, you know, in just the minimal amount of places possible and keeping the integrity of the wards how they were initially designed by the ward redistricting committee that was established in 20, well, I think the, it was 2017 when they actually looked at the ward boundaries.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Councilmember Arroyo?
Could staff speak to the timeline that we're working with here?
Sorry, go ahead, Pam.
Oh, no. Go ahead, Riley.
I am not really tightened up on the timeframes. I'm just doing my best. Do you know, Pam?
Yes, so we do need to have the adoption before the end of the year of the new ward boundaries. So that's why we really wanted to be able to discuss this to you, with you tonight. We didn't get the data until September and then to get it to you all. So if we were to do a committee, we would request to establish that immediately so that they would have time to meet. The last time we did this, they met a total of three times before making a recommendation to council. So to get that done before December and then be able, we would still bring it forward in an ordinance, so we would need to have a first and second reading. So we would need to get the committee established and the meetings done before mid-November. And staff recommendation, we can bring the recommendation to you in the form of an ordinance at our next meeting and have discussion and for the introduction. And we can, it would give us time to, if there was a lot of public comment or input regarding that ordinance, we would have a little bit of leeway to take our time with the ordinance before final adoption was necessary in December.
All right, Councilmember Bragel?
Do I just have two questions? Last time, it was 2017, how, so they met three times? What was, what was the timeline for that? How long were they? I mean, they could have met three times in three months. They could have met three times in three weeks. Do you remember what that looked like?
I want to say it was about three times in about a 60-day period, you know, to do that.
And then secondly, if we were to choose a committee, would this ordinance, could it be brought forward as an urgency ordinance, or would it need to go, or would it, that not work for this type of situation?
I will defer to City Attorney Black on that.
I see him trying to unmute.
I had to find myself in the gallery. What was the question? There was a question of timing?
Yeah, I was curious if we were to go with a committee, we could make that work. Is this the type of ordinance we could bring forward as an urgency ordinance, or would this not fall to that type of situation?
So I haven't looked at this. I think an urgency ordinance would be a possibility if the deadline that Pam referenced, which is like the first of the year, if that is a really hard deadline and just couldn't be pushed, I'd say that's a possibility. It would be nice to avoid that scenario, though, just because the question might come up, you know, why did you choose such a lengthy method of pursuing your goals and then end up in a situation where you have to do an urgency ordinance? So I'd rather avoid that. If you could, if you want to have a committee, I assume you're talking about an outside committee and not a committee of the council. If you did that, it would be nice if one of the criteria for appointment would be the ability to meet, you know, relatively expeditiously and get the job done in a matter of a few weeks.
Oh, go ahead. I was going to say, I'm not married to the idea. I just, I know that last time, it's nice to get people involved in the public process, and this is just an opportunity to do that. So people have some kind of ownership about what they're doing.
Yeah. Pam, I don't know, is it, is January 1 kind of a really hard deadline, or?
It's the, yes, it's the, it's in December. And I, sorry, I'm not prepared with the exact date in December, but it's towards the end of December.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
So we did, we kind of got sandwiched between the arrival of the data so that staff could start working with it and the deadline, which is only one, two, three months later.
Exactly. The COVID, you know, delayed the census and the information, or, you know, and the data. And so it's been kind of a combination of things.
Yeah. Yeah. So the answer is, I think it can be done on an urgency basis. But if you're going to move forward with a study committee, I would recommend that that be appointed certainly no later than your next meeting in order to get this work started.
I would, Councilmember, oh. One more thing. I just, I would be amenable to either one. I just, I like the idea of having the public involved. But if that seems to be problematic, as long as public has input, then I think we'll be all right.
Councilmember Castellano?
I know that the Lost Coast Outpost was soliciting recommendations for this, you know, which, though it's not, you know, official city channel, I'm curious if, you know, staff would be able to look at, you know, maybe some of the more plausible recommendations and then just kind of bring those forward along. You know, I guess rather than have an advisory committee, like bring those forward along with staff's recommendations so that we have some public input to consider, you know, alongside staff. So I appreciate the kind of like straightforwardness of what I see in staff's proposal.
I can tell you that Hank Sims would be just giddy if you were to offer that up to him. That's very much his daily work.
So are you, Councilmember Castellano, talking about like you take it to or so from what they suggest, plus maybe Riley's, and then we bring them all forward to council to pick the one, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm thinking that, or I am thinking that Riley would kind of look over some, if there, I don't know if there have been any proposals or anything, but that Riley would look over them and, you know, I assume some may make more sense than others. And so, you know, bring forward the ones that seem to have merit. I don't know. Just an idea.
When I checked the website today, there was nine completed maps and 22 folks had started the process but had not completed it, which I was surprised by. I thought that was quite a few folks. Of course, all of those would have to be validated by Riley and, you know, his technical skills. But, yeah, we could definitely, staff could look at that.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Just wanted to get some clarification. Are we going to open this item for a public comment, or are we making our comments now since it's just a report?
No, I was going to ask the same thing, because I was, oh, do we need to open this to public comment because it's a report?
Yes.
So then if we don't have any more questions, let me go ahead and do that. And also say that if, public comment will be on this item alone. And if you try to talk about another item, we will stop you immediately. So do we have any public comment on the redistricting? All right. Seeing none, I will bring it back for comments and direction. Councilmember Arroyo?
Yeah, I personally, having, we pretty recently went through the process of asking for a committee to make recommendations. And it looked like there might be some changes, you know, taking their recommendations into account. I don't know if we still have a record of kind of the spirit of their recommendations, but I understand that they really thought carefully about, you know, making sure that each ward had a mix of commercial and residential and, you know, was not, was, was, you know, a diverse representation of the community. And so if we could stick with the spirit of that, but have some staff recommendations come forward to kind of expedite the process, I think that, you know, as long as we're not making very dramatic changes, I believe that would suffice personally. I don't know if others feel that that wouldn't be perceived as fair. And if there's a concern about that, then of course I want to do whatever the community will feel is the most fair. But, you know, if it's possible to not make very dramatic changes and bring something back, I would, I would encourage us to go that route.
So we have, Councilmember Bauer?
I just support what Natalie said, you know.
I was just going to say, so we have a couple of things out there, which is just staff's recommendation. And the other is to bring back staff's recommendation of a few options so that we have a selection to choose from. So those are the two options. We don't need to make a motion, but, so who feels comfortable with the staff recommendation? We just do a hand raise thing?
Sorry, I didn't, to clarify, I didn't just mean one recommendation. I think it'd be nice to have a few options. So I think we're all talking about the same thing.
Okay. So that sounds good. We're all good with Riley bringing back a couple of options and then we select from those using the criteria that were determined by the last committee, sort of in keeping with the spirit of, Councilmember Moulton?
If we could make sure we get the maps to consider when we get the agenda to read, oftentimes reports include the map, so we don't actually see what we're talking about until the meeting. So I'd like a chance to go to the places we're talking about ahead of the meeting when it's agendaized.
Yes. Okay. Future agenda items, we have, you know, eight minutes left. So, and we have to do council reports. So if we have future agenda items, can we make them quick? All right. City manager, City Manager Slattery kind of anticipated he may not get to it today, but.
Yes. I do want to just give a quick update on what was requested from the last future agenda items as it relates to coal. I just want to let staff and the public know that we are meeting with stakeholders associated with it, and we will have at a minimum a discussion coming back to council sometime soon about. about how you guys would like to proceed to address that issue. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do want to make sure we get to council reports because we do have a mandated travel stuff that some folks have to take care of. So I'll go ahead and start with Councilmember Castellana. You're on mute, just so you know.
Well, that was good because I lost my sticky notes, but I found them. So you missed that moment of flusteredness. Okay. I did travel to the League of California Cities meeting where I attended quite a few different workshops. In particular, some focused on housing, the Surplus Lands Act. I also served as the voting delegate for Eureka at that, at the Assembly of Voting Delegates. It was fun. And in addition to that, I've been attending my regular board meetings, housing meetings, the homeless leadership work group meeting, the Fog Break Diversity Equity Inclusion meeting. Let's see, I want to welcome those new board members to Eureka Main Street. They're doing a great job, so I just want to welcome Linda, Rima, Nick and Astrid to the Eureka Main Street Board. And lastly, I want to say that I'm planning a virtual town hall on October 26 from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And please, I love conversing with members of the public, if you're still here, feel free to reach out.
All right. Councilmember Moulton.
Hi. I haven't done any travel, but I have been speaking with delegation, or folks in Kamisus, Japan in preparation to celebrate our 30th anniversary of the Sister City program with Kamisus. So I feel like I've traveled across the Pacific. We have a meeting coming up with Eureka City Schools. And I've been meeting with parents and talking to folks who have kids actually in schools nearby about their concerns so that I can bring them up directly with the superintendent, if anybody would like to talk to me, about concerns or even kudos with the school. Do get in touch. I did, I participated as an artist in Pastels on the Plaza, which is just a wonderful, super fun community event. They spread it across two days and had artists pick time slots. And I think it was a really good example of how we can continue these unique, interesting and beneficial community traditions in a way that is, that's safer, that makes people, people feel safe and comfortable. I participated in the South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance cleanup at the Jacobs Campus, which was gross and enlightening. And they have another one, South Eureka Neighborhood Alliance, has another cleanup coming up on October 23 at Highland Park. Some friends of mine and I are going to be patching graffiti in the mural because, you know, that's what you have to do. But if anybody would like to come out and help clean up Highland Park on the 23rd, we'll be out there. You can find more information about that online.
Councilmember Arroyo. Oh, wait, Natalie, Leslie, super fast.
Just real quick, I remembered when Katie was speaking, Eureka High School's homecoming is October 10th through 16th. I don't know, I just think it'd be fun if council did some sort of like all of us showing up or trying to show up to something if we can.
That would be really fun. Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo.
Yeah, thanks. I attended the Hubble Bay Symposium virtually this year. Went to most of the sessions and there was a lot of focus on economic development that's sustainable and on sea level rise and climate change. So those are both topics that I'm really interested in. And yeah, there was some, there were some great presentations. And I sort of took the time off of work to do that, that I would have taken, I suppose, to go to the League of Cities Conference. So that was, that was my training for the next little while. And I would love to find ways to share sort of lessons learned from those training opportunities with one another. I know that our meetings are packed and so that's a difficult thing to do. But I, I know we go to these learning opportunities and it's hard to kind of bring back and disseminate what we've learned. So I don't know if that's, perhaps that is a future agenda topic. But I participated in Coastal Cleanup Day. September was Coastal Cleanup Month. And there were kind of dispersed events throughout the month. I already mentioned this, but I went to the volunteer recognition event for some of the volunteer trail stewards that took place in the parking lot of the Warfinger Building. And it was great to see volunteers and encourage them in the great work that they do. And then coming up this week, I don't know if any of you are on this list for the Equity Alliance of the North Coast. They hold conversations in the community about topics around diversity, equity and inclusion. And this month's conversation is with Queer Humboldt. So I'm going to look forward to learning what I can there. And there are lots more meetings, but I will leave it there for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, I'm off mute. Yeah, I also attended the CalCities meeting in Sacramento and attended a ton of workshops and sessions. And I'll just say, my, my favorite was probably, and I forget the exact title, I don't have the pamphlet in front of me, but it was like Bridging the Polarization. And there's a group of great people that are trying to bring the political sides together. To, what we used to do is talk about issues that, you know, that matter to the community. Now we're kind of like this and we're not talking to this group, you remember Kim, like something Angels? But they're great and, you know, something that we all got to think about as we can see under a lot of issues that we face that were pretty polarized and certainly can't operate as a community if this maintains in perpetuity. So I'm trying to do some, do something with that issue. I also attended a great meeting of the Bridge District. So that's down there by Target. Great group of people, really fun to hang out outside and discuss the issues that affect them. Parking, you know, RV parking is one of them, but they're a great bunch of folks to get to know. And then I just attended a packout cleanup behind In-N-Out Burger, Alco Marsh area. And I think that we removed one of the biggest dumpsters you can possibly get. We filled that thing to the top. We actually pulled a king-size mattress out of the wetland, which can't believe you actually transported a 200-pound mattress way out there. But we did a great job and the volunteers are always great. It's always a bunch of insane people, some of them from out of, out of, from McKinleyville and stuff. And they're here in our city helping clean up. It's pretty cool. And then all my normal meetings, you know, were going on, but that's about the highlights I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bergel.
Thank you. Brave Angels. So I too went to the League of Cities. And two of my favorite, I went to a lot of the workshops, two of my favorite were Policy and Legal Considerations. And they did a lot of discussion about the Ninth Circuit decision and what that, how that can be applied in local areas. So that was really interesting and I took a lot of great notes. And then the other one that was really interesting was it had to do with COVID and economic development. And we had talked, or actually I talked to Pam about talking to one of the people there. Actually, she talked to me, we talked, we chatted, it was great, about bringing that, bringing that forward here locally. Some of the ideas that they had and I look forward to moving forward with that. I know Miles is working on that as well. So yeah, but that was really, it was interesting how innovative and creative they got. Like they had, Taco Bell was two stories and they had the drive-through underneath. I mean, there was just like all kinds of craziness that, that, out of the box ideas that are really important during these crazy times. So those were a couple of my favorites. The, I too attended the Packout Green Team event. I did not know it was a costume thing or I would have been in a costume. I was really disappointed by that. There was a hot dog there. He was very cute. And then just to let you know, Boo at the Zoo will be happening this year. I'll have more information on that next meeting. I've attended my meetings as per usual and I'm still constantly working to try to meet with people about cleaning up our green belts. I mean, Packout Green Team is a great example, but getting, you know, Caltrans went out and cleaned up our green belts on the 101. And, you know, there are two camps very deeply back in there again. And so trying to work with Caltrans and getting, you know, just being the vigilant, you know, practicing that behavior to try and get these things removed. And it's just, it's been, it's been a real struggle, to be honest. And then lastly, I will be at homecoming, all homecoming week. Pajama Days Monday, woo-hoo. I'm excited about that. And, you know, I just wanted to say one more thing. I wanted to thank Zurling and Zurling for removing those boats from the 1091 down by the Warfinger. Finally, those are gone and that is, area is getting all cleaned up. And I just really appreciate, I appreciate that because, you know, it's just, the blight is just, and, and it creates problems for people living under the boats and being in the boats. I mean, it's just, it was not very pleasant. So yeah, stay kind, stay well, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much. And with that, I believe we can adjourn this meeting at 10:30 on the dot. So thank you all for, for doing the hard work. It was hard work today and I appreciate y'all. See you soon.
See you here.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, everyone.